Alamance County is pleased to present the Alamance County Commissioners' Meet.
All right, good evening, let's come to order. This is the June 18th, 2018, 7:00 PM meeting of Alamance County Board of Commissioners. Welcome to you all and all five Commissioners who are here and present. We begin tonight with the invocation. Last time I had the invocation, two weeks ago, and I mentioned that we have sort of fallen into doing different things as Commissioners for the invocation. Mr. Sutton, when it was his turn, spoke about some things that were on his heart, which were very meaningful and contributed to the thought of the proceeding and the thought of those of us who are here. Mr. Bird likes to do a moment of silence, and so I've been thinking about it, was thinking about how the Bible is great literature, and through Western civilization, people have turned to the Holy Bible for words of comfort and guidance. And so tonight, instead in lieu of a prayer, I would like to read Psalm 100. Acclaim the Lord, all men on earth; worship the Lord in gladness. Enter his presence with songs of exaltation. Know that the Lord is God; he has made us, and we are his own, his people, the flock which he shepherds. Enter his gates with thanksgiving, and his courts with praise. Give thanks to him, and bless his name; for the Lord is good, and his love is everlasting; his constancy endures to all generations.
Amen.
So, if you would please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we get to our public speakers tonight, beginning in December, we got into the habit of reviewing before the public comment, public speaker part of the agenda, we got into the habit of reviewing the public comment policy as well as the rules about decorum of the audience, which were adopted by the Commissioners. So, and that was not done in response to anything that had happened, and not in anticipation of anything that might happen, but just sort of to help everyone understand the expectations when coming to the Board. So, this public comment policy was adopted as revised in September 2014. So, the public comment period is held at the beginning of each regular monthly meeting. The comment period shall be limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Then there's a Commissioners' Response Period immediately following the public comment period. This is a point of response from the Commissioners to respond to comments that have been made, not debates with the public. Each person desiring to speak during the public comment period shall have three minutes to make his or her remarks, and I intend to enforce that three-minute time period tonight. So, I was thinking about it, it's like the shot clock in college basketball. I think many of us are familiar with the rules of college basketball, and the shot clock goes off, it's done, and the ref takes the ball and gives it to the other team. And it's nothing personal against anybody, that's just the shot clock. So, we're gonna approach this with the same kind of spirit that when the clock goes off, it's nothing personal against the speaker, we have a big agenda, and we want to be able to get through the meeting in a timely fashion. So, I will enforce that, three minutes to make his or her remarks. There's no more than three speakers on any one topic per meeting. It's recommended that speakers desiring to speak on the same topic and advocating the same position choose one person to speak for all. Speakers shall address the Board from the lectern and begin their remarks by stating their name and address. If anybody needs accommodation for a disabling condition, if you would please let us know, we'd be delighted to try to accommodate that. Public comment is not intended to require the Board of Commissioners to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers shall address all comments to the Commissioners as a whole and not to individual Commissioners. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience shall not be allowed. Speakers shall be courteous in their language and presentation. If you have prepared written remarks and you would like to leave those with our clerk, that would be fine, then they'll be incorporated into our minutes. Speakers should not discuss any of the following matters which concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office, matters which are the subject to public hearings, and matters which are closed-session matters. Please don't use profanity or racial slurs. Speakers should not engage in personal attacks that by irrelevance, duration, or tone may threaten or perceive to threaten the orderly and fair progress of the discussion. So then, in our rules for the Board, the rules of procedure for the Alamance County Board of Commissioners under Article 6, Section 7, Decorum of Audience, audience members shall refrain from making unsolicited comments during the meeting. During speakers from the floor debate by the Board, audience members shall refrain from conduct which disrupts the proceeding. And then, audience members shall silence all cell phones and other electronic devices while attending the meeting. So, if you could please check your cellphone and be sure that it's silent. And we had some questions last meeting about our comment policy, and so I just asked Mr. Albright, our county attorney, to review that, to review our public comment and decorum policies, and did you have an opportunity to do that?
I did.
And did you find that our public comment and decorum policies, are they unusual?
No, many local governing bodies throughout North Carolina and our country establish rules of procedure about how meetings are governed, how appointments are made, and how citizens participate in the meeting. There are four good reasons for doing that. The first one is it sets a foundation for the meeting to be run in an efficient and in a consistent manner, emphasis on consistency. Secondly, it allows, these rules, excuse me, allows for the Commissioners and the residents to debate matters of public concern in a courteous and respectful manner that seeks to lessen the likelihood of discontent and friction, although you can't avoid it always, but that's the goal, to see that. And the third thing, to provide guidance to Board members on how they are to interact with one another and engage the community and the employees in these debates. And the fourth, and I think the most important thing, is it provides a continuity, a tradition or a pattern of stability on how our meetings are run, so that when you elect new members to the Board, they can step in and feel comfortable in sitting in your seats and following these rules.
Great.
That's the reason that we've done this.
Great, thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. So, the public speakers that we have tonight, the first one will be Mr. Coleman, Dean Coleman, and we're gonna start our 30-minute period starting at, we'll say 7:00. Go ahead, Mr. Coleman.
First of all, I want to thank all you folks for all the work that you do for the county. I went through about 25 budget periods myself as Parks and Recreation Director, and it's not easy, and there's never enough money to go around. I always tried to get a piece of the pie, and sometimes I was successful, and sometimes I wasn't. The reason I'm here tonight, I'll be, I don't think it's gonna take three minutes, but I wrote a letter to the Times-News to the editor, and I sent a copy to all you folks, I guess y'all received a copy of it. And I know all of you can read, I'm not gonna assault you with that, but I just, I just had to come before you, and I've talked to some school board people about the conditions that are at Western Alamance High School softball field. I don't know if you've ever been out there and taken a look at that situation, but I've got a granddaughter, and it's not just because she's there, she's been, this is her junior year, I've followed them a long time. And folks, they're, they're playing at the middle school, first of all, they're not even on the campus of Western Alamance. All the other school facilities are there, there's tennis courts, there's football, baseball, and all that. But they're down at the middle school, and I appreciate the principal down there working with that and all, but in attending these games, last year, our girls went 24 and 5. They went to the Final Four, got beat out in the Final Four, and we had such a good record at the time, is that all the teams that were playing us came here. And folks, it was so embarrassing for folks, I just had a list of people here. Clayton Cleveland out of Johnston County, Greenville Connolly, Swansboro, Harneck County, Eden Moorhead, Southern Alamance, Eastern Alamance, Williams, Guilford County teams, Havelock, all these teams came to our facility. And at one time, there was only one porta john there. Now, I don't know if you folks have ever been to a porta john, some of you ladies especially, I mean, it's not a pleasant thing. Just looking at it and the smell is terrible, but we had one, but when we started playing tournament games, they brought in the handicap accessible porta john, which was not handicap accessible because you had to cross the grass and the rock drive to get to it. And still, it was, of course, I didn't go to that one, but it was, I'm sure it was just like the one that was there before, just the one, but I, I just think that we can do better than that. I know there's no money, I might need more than, have I just got 10 seconds left? Can I take somebody else's time? Well, I can't do all this in 10 seconds, but you guys know where I'm coming from on this. Something needs to be done, whether or not, and I know you're gonna put the scat on me, but, but I just think, I don't know if lottery money can be used, or funds can be set aside. Now, the boosters and coaches and myself have donated money, and parents, and we're trying to raise a few dollars, but it's hard to raise monies. And so, if y'all could just see in your heart, some way to give us a few dollars, I'm speaking for Western. There's other schools in the same condition, like Eastern and Southern, who have bathrooms that are not very accessible. So, if you wanna take a look at that situation, you can, and if there's any time left over for speakers, I'd like to get back up again.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. All right, Tara Raggett. Is she gonna cut?
Probably is other room.
Mr. Sutton, name with the face.
That's right.
I know what your question is, but no, I'm already spoken for. I do appreciate your conversation.
You did say if I met you, how many years you ever would have asked for?
Never gonna forget me, I promise. All right. Thank you, though, I do appreciate it. Okay. The North Carolina form referred to at the last meeting does not show a correlation between per people spending and positive EOG scores. The report is actually an informational text about Article 9, Section 2 of the North Carolina State Constitution, which requires North Carolina to fund public education both at the state and county levels. There are a lot of federal studies which prove that increased spending improves the lives of students, not just test scores, but the lives. The outcomes, which include higher graduation rates, higher college graduation rates, higher rates of earnings as adults, improved social mobility, and a decrease in systemic and generational poverty. From 1950 to 1984, a timeframe when a majority of this Board went to school, the tax rate in this county was as high as $1.57, but never lower than 76 cents. This was during a timeframe when there was half the population, less roads, smaller county infrastructure, fewer police, EMS, roads, and schools. At the last meeting, we listened to the successes and accomplishments of our county's public school alumni, never once acknowledging that the tax rate was at times double than what it is now for students. The community invested in its citizens during this timeframe, and it sounds as if the outcomes went beyond test scores. There were high graduation rates, college graduates, higher rates of earning as adults, and improved social mobility, just more evidence that investing in education leads to long-term success. Last meeting, I mentioned the worst-case scenario of property tax rates. There was rebuttal that my numbers were off, and the tax rate could possibly, although highly doubtful, get as high as 71 cents. I updated the math to fit that rate, and it looks like homeowners were paid between $11 to $20 a month for county services. There are continuous lines wrapped around Chick-fil-A and Starbucks, always awaited Longhorn and Cracker Barrel. Downtown Graham, Meban, and Burlington are booming with small business growth. Elon University continues to grow, Target is expanding, Biscuit Village rebuilding in downtown Graham. These national chains are not doing research and building here so they can take a loss in profits, they're investing to make millions. I stand by the statement that our poorest citizens can afford an extra $11 a month, and our richest 22, in order to invest in a county bond and properly fund required county needs and infrastructure. This is not just about funding schools. I challenge you to stop using public education as the dividing point between citizens and the great debate of raising taxes by three cents. It's about funding a budget for an entire county, once what has conveniently failed to be acknowledged was there for you during your formative years. National chains are investing in Alamance County, students are traveling nationwide to attend Elon University, growth is exploding off of the I-40 corridor, and local banks are investing in small business loans for downtown growth. Investment experts are recognizing the county prosperity with long-term investing. The claim that now is not the time because we must be financially conservative is an antiquated opinion. It contradicts national and local investment experts and impending growth. It is time for this Board and its citizens to adhere to the county strategic plan, Article 9, Section 2 of the State Constitution, invest financially in this county, and fund the required services and infrastructure appropriately.
Thank you. Next is Christopher Tate, and then the next after him will be Noah Reed, so if Mr. Reed is in the upper flight room, if he wants to head this way, that'd be great. Come on up.
Doing all right, how are you? Commissioners, good evening, it's good to see all of you again. It's, it's that time of year where I'm seriously questioning why I'm still living in an area where we have 99-degree highs. I mean, it was hot, it was hot, my weather station at home said it was 99, and heat index almost 120, it was almost unbearable. But it's also the time of year where amateur radio operators around North America are preparing for, thankfully, what this year is forecast to be a fairly average hurricane season, but never, never ceases to be an interesting severe weather season. Amateur radio operators every year participate in Field Day, which is a, an emergency preparedness exercise where we set up temporary stations using portable equipment, stuff that we don't normally operate with in a new setting, as if we were simulating being in a disaster zone. This year, Field Day for the Alamance County Amateur Radio Club will be taking place at the EOC Fire Marshal's Office, that's in the rear parking lot of the EOC building at 1950 Martin Street in Burlington, just off Church Street. It's this Saturday, June 23rd, it'll start at 2:00 PM, run through the overnight to 2:00 PM on Sunday, the 24th. The Alamance County Amateur Radio Club is challenging ourselves this year. In the past, we've operated at most using 100 watts of power, compare that to your standard incandescent light bulb, which uses 60 watts, but this year, we're going to be doing something different. To test our ability to operate on battery power, on emergency power sources, under less than ideal conditions, we're going to be using less power this year than an LED light bulb. An LED light bulb puts out about 10, or consumes about 10 watts of power. This year, the club will be operating with just five. It gets us some bonus points, which helps us in our, in our hope to rise in the ranks of other amateur radio clubs across North America, particularly the US and Canada, but it's also an opportunity for us to see how effectively we can communicate should we have a massive power failure, should a substation go offline, and Duke Energy is not able to repair it for a couple of weeks, or, or some other natural disaster that cripples our infrastructure for an extended period of time. And that's what the overall goal of Field Day is, is if something happens where we do find ourselves incapacitated, inconvenienced, for whatever reason, how effectively can we get messages of critical importance, shelter needs, missing person information, coordinating search and rescue? How quickly can we get that coordinated inside Alamance County and with others at the state or at the regional with FEMA at the national level? So, once again, Field Day, June 23rd and 24th, 2:00 PM through the overnight to 2:00 PM. We have had people come at 2:00 AM, so if that's your thing, you're more than welcome to come, the public is also invited, so that you can see those that will help you communicate should normal communications fail. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, can I pronounce your name correctly, Reed?
Reed.
Okay, great. And the next is Daniel Bollinger, if he would make his way in here.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Noah Reed, and I live in Burlington, North Carolina. I'm a member of the Alamance County Board of Elections, and I come here tonight to alert you to a Board of Elections crisis created last week by a new unfunded mandate from the North Carolina General Assembly, and consequently, to ask you to eliminate or reduce cuts to the Board of Elections in this year's county budget. Senate Bill 325 passed into law last week creates a budgetary crisis for our local, for our county Board of Elections by dictating at the state level early, local early voting hours, days, and voting site options. Over three months ago, our county Board of Elections passed its early voting plan based on a flat budget, as required by your Board. The Board of Elections was then asked twice to cut our budget, and we did so, cutting over $18,000. As a percentage, this was higher than most other county departments. These new cuts leave our department vulnerable to employee losses, necessitates funding cuts for operating supplies, voting equipment, and voter education and engagement, and makes operating early voting sites a challenge. Then, last week's passage of Senate Bill 325 put new demands on our county elections Board budget that turn our existing budget crunch into a budget crisis. Senate Bill 325 mandates that we expand the number of hours during weekdays, and requires us to operate all early voting locations on the same schedule. In a perfect world with full funding, these requirements could offer voters some benefit, but in a county whose election services already suffer from budget cuts, these requirements and loss of flexibility will stretch our budget to the breaking point, necessitating reductions in early voting days, reductions in voting sites, and the number of election workers. Under the proposed county budget, the first cuts to voter services necessitated by Senate Bill 325 will be the elimination of all Saturday early voting hours in Alamance County. But even by cutting all Saturday early voting times, the Board of Elections will still fall far short of its funding needs under the new requirements. The next place to cut will necessarily be the elimination of an early voting site, most likely the Holly Hill Mall location, reducing our county early voting sites from three to two. And we will be forced to cut funds to hire the number of poll workers needed at early voting sites. This will increase demands placed on poll workers, who will already be under greater strain caused by longer mandatory hours. Limitations on early voting will also result in increased voting on Election Day. This change will create longer lines, overworked staff, and reduced voter participation. I know this is late in the budget process, but given the new unanticipated requirements by our state government, I ask you to please consider eliminating the cuts to our budget, which were about $18,000, and to adequately fund our Board of Elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Bollinger, and the next person is on the list is Michael Wallace, he wants to come from the upper flight room.
Commissioners, I took a zero in speech class, so you'll have to excuse me. Hello, my name's Daniel Bollinger, I'm of 1625 Sandy Cross Road. I'm here tonight to comment on the Mountain Valley Pipeline-South Gate Extension Project. This is a project that will not benefit any residents of Alamance County, but instead, we'll try to use unwilling Alamance County residents' land to make billions. Sure, MVP will paint this project to be all rainbows and sunshine, but it is wrong on so many fronts, from property rights to environmental consequences to safety hazards. We will bear the burden of this mega corporation in our county. Our property values will decrease, our families will be endangered, our natural resources jeopardized, and our land will be rendered useless. The use of eminent domain for the purpose of private gain is inappropriate and abusive. There is no documented need for additional pipelines in North Carolina, but know that all of us will be paying for this if this pipe goes in the ground. The investors for this project are guaranteed a hefty 14% rate of return that will be passed along to all consumers, even if not one ounce of gas ships through that pipe. MVP has a legacy of misleading landowners, community members, and officials. I've seen this company's misconduct already firsthand. They were notified by myself and many neighbors not to come on our property, but did anyway. This is government-authorized theft for the benefit of corporations who think they're bigger than government and its citizens. Yes, they will pay us fair market value for the land that they take from us, but if we wanted fair market value, we'd have already soaked our land. Excuse me. I'm asking that the Commissioners stand with us in this fight for the good of our county and its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bollinger. Michael Wallace, and then the next on the list is Madora Burke-Skull. I'm sorry if I.
Hello, hey, I'm Michael Wallace, I live at 3695 Danley Water Wheel Road. I too wanted to talk about Mountain Valley Pipeline. My wife and I, five years ago, had purchased 42 acres of land with the envision of building a home and a place for our children to build a, build a home as well. Since then, we have built a barn, and we just finished our home in February. Three months after moving in, we received a letter from MVP advising us that they were considering expanding an additional gas main. We already have a gas main, they were gonna put another one running parallel to an existing 36-inch gas main, I think that's important to remember. So, the lady reached out to me, and I called her back, and she, she essentially told me in her words, they would be unfortunately infringing on my property and would need to survey. So, I told her politely, no, also told her not to return to our property for any reason. I found out later, I met the Bollingers, and that they had the same cause, and essentially on their property, it was maybe even going through a neighbor's home. After speaking with the previous owner of our property, he had walked me through some steps about how the initial gas line was put in place, how they essentially just said, "We're coming, there's not much you can do, eminent domain." And if this, this easement that this gas line is going on, you can't build, bury, even put a septic system on, as far as that goes. So, me and several of our neighbors are affected, and if my calculations are right, on our road alone, 23 acres are affected, 23 acres, six of it being ours. And it's my understanding eminent domain is defined by the government's ability to purchase your property if it's deemed necessary for the public use. Also, in my opinion, this is not the case. With this particular pipeline, its potential path is parallel to an existing pipeline. It's delivering gas to an area near 8540, and after its completion, MVP's master plan is to deliver gas to the New York and Gulf Coast. In closing, this is not necessarily necessary to the public, this is a blatant attempt to install a line capable of distributing gas to customers nowhere near North Carolina. It's also an attempt by MVP to deceive the people of Alamance County into believing this line will convey natural gas and help create a competitive atmosphere, where consumers will benefit. I believe that MVP has deceived the people of West Virginia, Virginia, and are setting their sights on North Carolina. We unfortunately will suffer huge losses in this process. We were also made aware the natural gas has been discovered in Rockingham County, North Carolina. Could it be MVP will run this line right through Rockingham County, and then decide to tap into this natural resource by fracking, while the people of Rockingham and Alamance County sit idly by? To make matters worse, they will profit billions, we will lose thousands, and they will move on to the next rural community and do the same thing over again. It's not fair, we need your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. So, here comes Ms. Burke-Skull, and then Jeff Tudor, if he would come to the meeting room.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners, my name is Madora Burke-Skull. I live at 3673 Meban Rogers Road in Meban. You can't see it in here, but back in the waiting room, you have a room completely full of Red for Ed education supporters here tonight to once again encourage you to consider increasing the education budget here in Alamance County. I'm here tonight as a representative of the Alamance-Berlington Association of Educators. We're a part of the North Carolina Association of Educators and NEA. We share the ABSS vision of a national caliber model of education. If we follow our vision and our strategic plan, our high-quality educators will have the resources we need to build this dream. We have the quality educators, we have fantastic educators, innovative, creative educators, making do with a lot less than our neighboring counties and getting very comparable results. But what we need, we also have the community and industry partnerships, we have some really, really cool programs here in Alamance County. What we need is real leadership from you guys. We don't need empty campaign promises comparing education funding to how we treat garbage at the landfill. What we need is people to stand up and put their money where their mouth is, and do the right thing for students and this community in Alamance County. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tudor?
Good evening, I'm Jeff Tudor, I live at 1312 Branson Drive in Graham. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for you tonight. The Alamance County Public Library's mobile library, bookmobile, and mobile internet service will mean so much to the citizens of Alamance County, especially those who cannot get to a branch library on a regular basis. So, please take a moment and picture in your minds the opportunities this mobile library will bring, enabling a student to complete a homework assignment, providing resources to the residents at a retirement community or a senior center, bringing books to a preschooler or a student who's on summer break. So, this budget is your opportunity. So this budget is your opportunity to invest not only in the young people of Alamance County, but also to do something for those who've worked hard all their lives but now find themselves unable to get around the way they used to. So the library staff has done their job in all of this. They found the funding to provide a mobile library and a mobile pop-up internet access point, and now they need you, our county Commissioners, to step up and provide the funding for the part-time drivers these new services will require. And please note that I said "part-time drivers." Our libraries have endured budget cuts when the local funding was tight, but these days our local economy is thriving, and now is the time to expand library services to the people of our county who have long done underserved through no fault of their own. I urge you to fully fund the requested budget for our Alamance County Public Libraries, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Tudor. All right. Do we have any Commissioner responses?
I'd like to ask a question about the pipeline. You say there's another pipeline out there. Who is it?
Mr. Wallace has one of his land.
Okay. Do you know who it's from, though? What company?
Colonial.
It's Colonial and Plantation. I know that. You say Colonial?
I think it's Colonial, but I'm not entirely sure.
It's Cardinal.
Cardinal? No, I mean Cardinal. Is this natural gas or is this petroleum?
Yes, sir. Both are natural.
Okay. What are our abilities to do anything with this, Brian or Clyde?
The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission has jurisdiction over this, and they are the ones that permit pipelines. They permitted the Mountain Valley Pipeline in West Virginia and in Virginia. It's in Chatham, Virginia now, and they have a huge pumping station, and the plans are to seek approval to come down through Rockingham County near 87th and stop in Graham with their pipeline. 24-inch pipeline. That's all I know about it thus far. They're in the permitting process right now. But under state law, they have the right to enter someone's property with notice. They write a letter to the plant donor. They can go on the property and do a preliminary survey, take a soil boring. If they damage the person's property, they have to pay for it, but they do have that power of eminent domain. Because can eminent domain be neutralized by the local government? Not in this case. That's a state law.
Is it state or federal?
Well, the power of eminent domain, the power of condemnation, will be under state law. The permitting for the permission to put the pipe in the ground is a federal regulatory matter.
Can we pass a resolution to oppose it? Nothing preventing us from doing that if we want to.
I'm not sure what good it...
If they're not doing any good, but at least we can be on record.
But they are in permitting process by now.
Now, we already have, is it Colonial or Plantation or both that comes from Greensboro through our county, southern part of county?
Well, there's several. There's the Eastern Tennessee Pipeline Company that comes into Eden right now.
I'm talking about through Alamo County.
I think Colonial and, of course, has the huge storage facility in Greensboro, and I think it comes out of Alamance County, along with Piedmont. But one thing to consider, and now you haven't heard from Copland Fabrics or the industry that use this gas. I know I was in another life in the textile business as a corporate attorney, and we had to have three or four different types of fuel sources to run our plant, one of which was natural gas, the other was number two, three, and four fuel oil and coal.
The problem is, does this even branch out to where they can use it?
Well, they have local distribution companies that can send that out. That's the way it normally works. I'm no gas expert, but what they do is they get it to a distribution company that already has the lines going to residential and commercial properties. So that's something to think about.
I'd kind of like to see if we put on the agenda for a future meeting, so, and then the public will know. A lot of people can come and present pros and cons, and we could pass, if we chose to, we could pass a resolution to at least be the voice of the citizens that we represent.
There are some meetings scheduled by the Department. I asked, it's on the Graham City website, and I've asked our information officer to put it on our website as well. Informational meetings.
Are there any Supreme Court? I mean, there's always been some debate about what's eminent domain and what's not. And for the public good versus profit is two different clear distinctions. Has that not gone full of the Supreme Court?
This is the, the issue is one of public necessity. That's the test, and that's what the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission assesses. And they balance the need and the consumers' need along with the necessity of putting a pipeline in. And that may be a factor. Again, if there's an existing pipeline that can serve it, that may be one of their factors. See, some of the pipelines that I'm familiar with, they not only ship natural gas, but they ship fuel oil and gasoline in various grades with plugs and water separating the elements through the system. That's how sophisticated it is.
Can you at least check, sit there in precedence through the Supreme Court, U.S. Supreme Court?
Well, there are some cases that talk about private condemnation, and they all rest on this public necessity issue, but I'd be glad to let that...
But if there's already a pipeline there, how...
Well, I don't know. I don't know all the permitting requirements. I heard about this through the Sheriff's Department, and the sheriff was asked to go out and arrest the surveyors, which I don't think is a good idea.
But it's worth a try, though, right?
Well, Mr. Hager, can we put this on an agenda in the future to, I guess, the public has had the opportunity to hear from the company itself, and have noticed that we'll be considering a possible resolution.
Sure. If I may add, I sent you a memo with the website for the pipeline company, informational website, so you can access that to get started.
And I got a whole packet of information from MVP to delegate one. Obviously, very slandered to their side.
Besides every story.
There is, and Copland Fabrics is a very distinguished company that's been here for a long time, and they are also passionate about their need for natural gas to be able to do what they're, to run a successful business. What other Commissioner responses do you have to make?
I'd just like to comment on Christopher. I think he's been here, how many years, Christopher? How many years have you been?
I, I think this is my eighth year speaking before the Commissioner.
And he's off to college, so...
And which college is that?
Well, it's funny, you should be the one to ask that, Mr. Bird. We are.
We are.
Yes, I'm heading out to Penn State University this Friday, actually, starting on some summer classes up in Happy Valley.
Good. Best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I was going to possibly comment on the comments about education, but I think I'll save that till we talk about the budget later on.
Mr. Ashley?
No, I'm good.
Oh, just one question. Well, yeah, that was disconcerting about hearing from Mr. Reed on the new unfunded mandate from the Board of Elections.
I guess when we talk about the budget, we can discuss that also.
Sure.
The one thing that I will comment on tonight is, I think Ms. Burke-Skoll mentioned something about comparing the garbage at the landfill, the fourth thought that went into the construction of landfill and education, and that was my original analogy during the 2016 campaign. At a forum, I reflected on how many years ago there was a lot of attention and thought and effort given into creating a landfill for Alamance County to prepare for the future, and that's worked out great. We have a great landfill, and it's been very successful. Some people have criticized me, saying that I have not followed through with that kind of thinking since being elected, which I would very much dispute because I see the bond proposal being putting in that kind of infrastructure that we need, that physical infrastructure that students need in order to learn. And so I stand by that analogy, and I think that it is important that Alamance County invests in the future of our children, particularly when it becomes two physical facilities. So that's all I want to say about that. If everybody has had time to review the agenda, then we can approve it and get on with it.
I move that we approve it.
Second.
Thank you. There's no further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Then the consent agenda, we have quite a few things on the consent agenda. When everybody has had a chance to look that over.
I move that we approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, Mr. Baker. Approval to accept grant funds.
Go on, Commissioners. It's not morning. Good evening. I've got two items for you. I know, I'm just ready to get up for the whole day. Two items for you, both grants, seeking your approval to accept. The first is a grant of $65,000 from Impact Alamance. This will help us construct a pedestrian footbridge over Boyd's Creek. I noticed, I think I put a map in the packet, but I didn't see it when I went through the packet, so I have some with me if you want to see a map. But Boyd's Creek is about a half mile north of Highway 70 at Three Governors Bridge on the Tana Hall River. We have existing trails, trail there, the Hall River Trail, Mountains of Sea Trail runs through there, but at the time we built the trail, we didn't have money for the bridge, so...
Is it going to be similar to going to Chalke Ford?
It'll be longer, yeah. But this will probably be a suspension bridge, depending on if we can get that built. So it'll be an attractive bridge. You'll have to work to get there, so. There's no county match required for this, a grant from Impact Alamance.
I move we accept that.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Did you say you have some maps?
I do have a map.
Yeah, I'd like to have one, too.
We have more grant funds to accept and property to acquire.
Impact Alamance is really coming through this community.
I really am. It's going to be a big help. I can't tell.
Is that a map of the footbridge?
Sorry.
That's the map of the footbridge?
Yeah. Does that help?
Sorry.
Oh, yeah.
I just got to ask you, still a question maybe, but what's the liability, our liability and the insurance laws and all that?
State has some legislation that protects, like private property owners, if the trail runs over private properties. If I remember right, I think people that are using the trail on private property from a property owner's perspective are treated as trespassers in the eyes of the law, and then, I think I'm right in saying Clyde would have to confirm this, that this is an approved form of recreation for counties to provide, hiking trails, natural passive use parks.
We have immunity by statute for these things to encourage plant owners to allow us...
So if somebody got injured, we would not be liable?
Neither would the landowner. Okay.
So I'll try and... So the second grant is a grant from the North Carolina Clean Water Management Trust Fund in the amount of $295,000. We will use it to acquire 153 acres to add to the Kane Creek Mountain Natural Area. So this will be the third property we're acquiring there. Will put us between 500 and 600 acres for that entire park at this point. The property value of this property is $610,000, so we're getting private donations for about 52% of that and 48% from the state to fund that purchase. This particular piece of property was owned by some local families and was actually a summer camp of some sort in the early part of the 20th century, so we're even more excited to bring this back to public use.
What is your long-term for all that property then, or do you buy it all in the same area?
Yeah, they're all...
What's the purpose?
All adjacent to each other. It'll be a natural area. It'll be similar to what we have at Chalke Ford. Most of this funding comes from the state, and they have pretty strict conservation requirements on what we'll be able to do there. So we'll be able to use it for trails and probably some camping, some picnicking, things like that, but it won't be heavily developed. Their primary interest is in the natural species there, and it's a very unique ecosystem, and their interest is in preserving it, and our interest is in sharing it while we preserve it.
I move approval. Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Mr. Hill? We have these franchise agreements. This is the second reading for these, I think, so as we did thus last meeting.
Correct. Just need for your, the second reading and for your approval.
This was to renew the franchise agreements for two different companies to deal with two different things, household garbage and recyclables. So it was a total of four motions.
One note, just before the meeting, I was talking to a representative from Waste Industries concerning House Bill 56. Some of you may know what's going on there, but there were changes in state law last year that affects the county's ability to affect flow of trash within the county. In the past, we have always had the ability to make the generalized statement that if it originates here, you have a responsibility to bring it to our landfill for fiduciary That was, the governor's veto was overridden last year. It was put into law by the General Assembly, and in essence, that takes away our legal right, at least when it comes to the municipalities, on ordering them to bring the trash to us. Now, we can enter a local agreement with them, but in talking to the representative from Waste Industries, apparently there is conversation in Raleigh right now of rolling that back. So this is a very fluid conversation, but the reality of it is we need a six-month extension on all these franchise agreements to allow us to figure out what's going on at state level and see if we can't come up with a good, well-written contracts going forward that protects the county and the vendor, whether that be in the form of CIPs, other contractual issues, one-year, two-year, three-year programs. It's a very volatile market, and we just need to rewrite these to everybody's advantage.
What do you mean by possibility of rolling it back? What does that mean?
Well, again, the governor vetoed the change, and it was overridden by the General Assembly.
So help me understand the change. So it used to be that we could mandate the municipalities to take their trash to our landfill.
The fact that we had a county-owned facility allowed us to dictate that all flow of trash within the county had to come to our landfill.
Okay, so that got changed by the legislature. The governor tried to veto it, but he lost that, so the current legislation takes that ability away from us.
That's correct, with the exception of franchise agreements, we can still dictate that.
Okay. And, so the rolling back means to go back to the old way where we do have that control?
Possibly. Possibly. We're waiting for that decision, and it's one of the reasons we're asking for this six-month extension, to see how that works out, because that will have, whichever way it goes, it's going to have to be incorporated in our new franchise agreements.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
We do want to make mention of the visit that we had from the Republic area president for information.
Well, sure. Well, why don't you go ahead? You brought it up.
Sorry, well, doesn't matter. So a Republic representative, the area president came to, and I believe they called a meeting, and I was invited, Commissioner Galey and I attended, just to hear their response to addressing some of the quality, service quality concerns that some of our residents in the northern part of the county were having, and I thought it was a nice gesture, and so I hope that things will work out over this six-month period.
Something, I think, I was down in Wilmington last week at a certification meeting and got chance to meet with several people from the public from outlying areas, and we planted a seed of dissatisfaction, so I think there may have been some calls that originated that maybe helped that meeting go forward. I hope so.
So there is a couple that lives in the northern part of the county who's trash with... wasn't picked up last Monday and they've, they've been having a bunch of problems over time and he actually visited, I heard from them later in the day, he actually visited them and took their trash in his own truck.
Right. That's the service. That's. And we have some examples of that we've done ourselves.
There's no excuse not to free customers with, you know.
And none of that discussion has anything to do with House Bill 56 or even the extension, to be quite honest.
You need four, four motions?
Yeah, let's talk.
She, she actually has to read all four. Okay.
Okay, so I need to just go ahead and read the, the ordinance here and then I guess we'll vote on that. Okay, so should I read the whole thing for the whereas's and everything?
No, just, I would just describe what was there.
Would you like me to, can I do that or?
Yes.
Please.
People have asked.
So, there's actually six contracts for, six franchise agreements. If you divvy the county up between the northern and southern parts, you have Republic that has the northwest and the northeast for both general trash pickup and recyclables. In the southern part of the county, unincorporated areas, you have Waste Industries doing the same, recyclables and general trash. And what we're in essence asking, just a six-month extension of those existing contracts. Nothing changes, no routes, no cost changes, no anything until we can work out a new agreement and most likely that would be a bidded process.
So, we need a motion for Republic Services for Trash and Republic Services for Recycling and Waste Industries for Trash and Waste Industries for Recycling.
That's correct.
We need four separate votes on this.
I'll make a motion to approve the Republic contract for Trash for six months.
Okay, Republic and Trash. All right, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, then the next would be Waste Industries will go with Trash.
So moved.
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, then we have Waste Industries for Recycling.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then the last is Republic Services for Recycling.
I move.
Second.
All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. All right, we'll sign these after the meeting. Start to let them around. All right, so we got a recycling ordinance.
So, one of the issues, and we spoke about this two weeks ago, is that we have a, a very volatile market in the recycle arena due to the China Sword Program, which in essence took about 55% of the worldwide recyclables and a contaminator rate, contamination rate of 3% reduced that to 0.5 and all crap happened. So, the commodities market fell apart, prices went down, backlogs behind the MRFs, the reworks facilities went up. Several other countries like Vietnam and other areas in Asia have kind of picked it up a little bit, but now they've closed their harbors because they're at capacity. So, where we find ourselves is that there are a lot of products that are restricted out of our landfill by state statute and we're not proposing changing anything there, obviously. However, we do have additional items that we keep out of the landfill that are local ordinance, one of which is corrugated cardboard and is a particular product that's been impacted in a big way by what's happening internationally. So, what we're asking you to do is to allow us to make a revision to our solid waste ordinance and our recycle ordinance that previously had excluded, excluded cardboard and allow us to take up to 125 tons per month. Sounds like a lot, it's not. It represents far less than 1% of our annualized volume. And the reason for this is local companies picking up the cardboard are having a very difficult time taking it to Greensboro, for example, to a MRF. Therefore, they have to take alternative routes, some of which all the way down to Sampson County, that is more expensive, also creates a carbon footprint much higher. So, we think it's the best interest for the environment to allow some relief against our ordinance, to allow these companies to bring it to us, again with a cap of 125 tons per month, six months only. And we also have the right and we'll continue to double charge for that product going to our landfill. Tipping rates 38, they will be charged 76.
And that's just for industry, not for residential?
Yeah, this is not residential. This is your large containers at shopping malls and things like that where cardboard only goes in and where they're trying to.
The actors that.
Yes, somebody was compacted and they're trying to take it to MRFs. Things are getting backed up, backed up, price points are really high.
So, what do you expect to happen during the six-month period? Are you going to be researching other alternatives or?
Well, we're going to track how much is coming in, number one, and make sure we limit that to 125. The hope is during that period of time, the markets will start to correct themselves and that we can get back to the MRFs being able to handle the volume and.
So, when you say it's equivalent to less than 1% annually, that should mean it should be equivalent to less than 1% monthly too, correct?
Oh, yes, yeah.
I didn't, wanted to make sure if you weren't going to.
Actually, if we take, if we take the whole 125 tons for six months, it represents 0.8% of our annualized volume.
Well, wouldn't it be 0.8% of the six-month volume?
Well, if you, if you extrapolate the volume over a whole year, it's 0.8. So, and, and in talking to Waste Industries, which has been very directly hit by this and talking to them tonight, a lot of their product now is going to Sunoco in Raleigh, which is a large recycler. So, they're thinking they'll stay under this limit coming to us. Again, we're just trying to provide relief and not creating more of an environmental problem.
So, I'm okay on the relief part while we work it out, but I, I just think we need to do everything we can to recycle.
It's not really a long-term solution.
Yeah, we, we all agree. We'd rather it not come.
Is this out of county court board?
No, all in county.
Okay.
So, we need two votes. One is to amend Alamance County Solid Waste Ordinance. To.
And the recycle ordinance.
Yeah, that's the second vote, those are the two votes. So, first would be to amend Alamance County Solid Waste Ordinance as presented.
I'll make a motion and we'll approve that.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And then the recycling ordinance needs to be amended, revised as presented. Do anyone make a motion?
I move we approve that.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Higood.
Oh, good evening, commissioners. Here this evening to bring you up to date on the Carnotl Building and the Rudd Street Building and the proposed demolitions there. As you recall, recently came to you and brought to your attention that we're working on our facility plan and the folks we're working with are looking at our vacant properties first. That's one of the first things they looked at. Carnotl Building and the Rudd Street Building were two that they focused on and they've recommended to us that we demolish both of these buildings, but keep the land until we get through our facility plan process and determine what's the best use for the actual land. So, talked to y'all last time about this desire to demolish both buildings. Since then, we put out a request for bids to demolish the buildings. We ran ads in the newspaper and on the county's website. We had five firms that responded. Of those five firms, D.H. Griffin was the low bid at $114,900. That bid tabulation sheet's in your packet. You can see all the companies that bid. What I would suggest is due to the age of the Carnotl Building, that we also add a 10% contingency to this cost. We're not sure what will be discovered once we get inside the building, start demolishing it. We figure there may be more hazardous material in the building than, than we can see. So, I would suggest that we would include a 10% contingency. That would make the total cost of the demo for both buildings, Carnotl and Rudd Street, to be as high as $126,390. I would suggest and recommend to the board that we select D.H. Griffin to do the demolition of both buildings, Carnotl and Rudd Street. I recommend that we budget $126,000, $126,390 from funds that are in our designated fund for county facility needs. The current balance of those funds that are designated for county facility needs is $3,471,970. If we were to spend all $126,390 on these demolitions, the new balance would be $3,345,580. But anything that we did not spend out of the $126,000, we would leave in designated funds. So, what I'm asking you to consider tonight is to give me permission to contract with D.H. Griffin to do this work and then also permission to use funds from our facility fund balance. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
And that designated fund balance doesn't go against our goal of a 25% of, for undesigned?
That's correct.
Right.
Yes.
So, it doesn't negatively impact that at all?
That's correct. It's not part of our unassigned fund.
And was that, most of that fund balance from the sale of peak resources?
It was, yes.
Okay, we would be seeking then a motion to give Mr. Higood permission to enter the contract with D.H. Griffin and designate $126,390.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Who's Evans?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm bringing several items before you tonight, the first of which is asking permission from the Board of Commissioners to designate $58,150 for projects that have not been able to be completed during the fiscal year 1718. What we would like to do is set aside $20,000 from planning salary and wages to be used for the contracted services for our planning department until a director is hired for that position. And also to designate $38,150 from our maintenance contracted services budget that would go toward our facility study.
So, these funds are in this fiscal year's budget. We'd like to carry them over to next fiscal year when they will be spent.
I'll move that we approve it.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And the next item that I'm bringing before the commissioners is there have been three funds that were set up many moons ago within the county's budget that we would need board action to be able to close those funds out. We would like to recommend that we close out our water assessment fund as well as the street assessment fund. For water assessment fund, there's a balance of $367,558.69 as well as the street assessment fund of $646,305.24. Looking back at records, it appears that there has been a small balance there that interest has just been allocated to each month and so it has grown over several years. And we would like to ask that fund, just for our book records to be transferred from these funds to our general fund. On our financial statements, they're already being reported there. This will just clean up our records on our general ledger. Also with the property insurance fund, several years back, we had set up a separate fund because we were in a high-risk assessment and we were trying to kind of self-support ourselves on that one. We are now back with travelers, as you approved tonight. We are having lower deductibles and being able to take care of those needs and we would ask just to dissolve that fund. The $114,000 would be transferred back to the general fund.
I think if I understand right, the $114,000 will, will help us with our.
That will, that's correct. It will be transferred in and will go toward fund balance.
Our unassigned fund.
Mm-hmm. Unassigned fund balance.
The others will not, but the $114,000.
What, what were these? Water assessment fund, street assessment? What are they?
What it appears to be is that long, long, long time ago, when different water pipes were bran, then landowners had an option that they could try to tap on. And so, the county would kind of facilitate that within the municipalities. We would take the payments and then submit that to the municipality for that. During just the course of going back in records, we went back and I was looking in records back to the 70s. So, when you had those balances and interest was being allocated to that, it's just continued to grow over the course of all these years and so we would like to just close those funds out off of.
We don't even deal with it.
We don't deal with that anymore. Like I said, it's just because it was a balance out there and when just interest is allocated out, because the balance is there, it's being allocated there, where if we can close those funds out, then everything is truly in our general fund where it's being reported on our financial statements.
These funds came to light as we went through our budget process and we're looking for every available dollar and we realize we have these funds.
Doing good there. Keep looking.
Yes, every time Susan would bring one to me, I thought we had struck gold.
Keep looking, guys.
But this will help us properly allocate these funds.
Well, I move that we accept that recommendation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And my last cleanup item of the evening is asking the board to be able to reclassify designated fund balance from uninsured liability to unassigned fund balance. Went back into the records and back in 1987, the only thing that I could find in the board minutes was that the Board of Commissioners had approved to designate funds for insurance liability. That current balance right now is $553,204.64 and I'm just asking permission to do a journal entry to transfer those over into unassigned funds. Because the board designated it, it takes board action to undesignate those funds.
I don't believe, Susan talked with the auditor, this will not actually help our 18.3%?
That's correct, but it just cleans that up off of our books and helps us to be able to reclassify.
How do we go so long without finding these intricacies?
Well, it's, they've been there. It's just that when we were looking through the budget, Brian was turn every stone that we can. And so, going back through and looking at our general ledger, it's time to do a little bit of cleanup and these are just the items that need to be handled.
So, did you. The first two figures, a total of a million dollars.
Yes.
I saw an auditor just did pick up on it.
Well, we knew those funds were there, but we were just taking the opportunity this year to, after we had thoroughly examined what were those funds for and not really seeing that there was a valid reason to have a separate fund for that, Commissioner Sutton. Because it was a fund that was created by the board through the permission of the board, you have to have board approval when you're wanting to dissolve a fund. And so, what by dissolving that fund will do, will it authorize me to be able to move those funds from one fund to the next without having to come back to the board again and again and again.
Well, we're not going to find a million dollars every year like that, but how much did this affect any decisions on the budget?
Well, none of it, none of it can be spent. Well, it could be spent if the board wanted to. I would suggest that we would not because it's not going to be recurring monies. My hope was, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit about our fund balance here when we go through the presentation. My hope was some of these funds would help our unassigned fund balance percentage, which is currently by the 1617 audit, 18.3. We're preparing to spend some of it in 1718. So, we were looking at these dollars. My hope was if we change how they're designated, will it help us build our unassigned fund balance and help us if we are going to try to get a new credit ready? The only one that will is the $114,000.
That's correct.
But from an accounting perspective, from Susan's perspective, deep in the internals of accounting, this is the right thing to do and it is helpful on that front. But it'll still be, most of this will still be part of the 18.3%.
That's correct, because in the financial statements, our auditors are already picking up those amounts and reflecting it in the financial statement, all the general fund. This is, like I said, it's just a housekeeping thing. It'll clear up our general ledgers and we'll be able to close out those three funds.
They, they weren't committed to anything.
Exactly.
So, would it help any, you know, we were talking about the hole that we're in with respect to health insurance, our self-insured fund? Since this is sort of insurance related, is that, would, would it help that if it were applied there instead?
If we were to transfer funds from the general fund to the employee health insurance fund, you would see a decrease in the unassigned fund balance.
And that would hurt.
That would hurt. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion and we'll approve it.
Second.
Thank you. So, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Good evening. So, I'm here to talk about a new state mandate and then I'm going to tell you about a even So I'm here to talk about the, let me get my bearings with this. I'm here to talk about the required memorandum of understanding that is now required through Session Law seventeen. It was part of, added as part of the budget bill last year, and it goes into effect on July first of this year. And what it does is it requires all counties, all one hundred counties, to enter into an annual written agreement with the Department of Health and Human Services for all services that are provided by social services except our Medicaid area, which is already covered in some other legislation. This law requires the agreement to contain performance measures, and I included a copy of those performance measures in your packet, and administrative responsibilities related to social services. Probably the most significant change is this next bullet, which says this agreement is between the Department of Health and Human Services and the county. It is not an agreement between Health and Human Services and DSS. Each county shall decide who the appropriate authorized signatory should be, and at the end of my presentation, Brian and I are looking for a recommendation as to who you would like to sign this. This is effective July first, so in a couple of weeks, and this year it runs the fiscal year. The first six months will be used to set some baselines, and since the state doesn't have all their data sources yet, no county will be held responsible until January first of two thousand and nineteen. So that gives us six months to measure where we are with these performance measures that are outlined in this agreement. In the event that the county fails to meet these performance standards or otherwise comply with the MOU, the Department of Health and Human Services can withhold state and federal funding. So Kelly, my finance person's back there, can tell you we draw about a million dollars a month, a little more than that, a month. Seventy-five percent of our budget is federal and state revenues, so that's a pretty chunk, pretty big chunk of money. Noncompliance is defined as not meeting performance standards for an extended period of time. That extended period of time is, and Commissioner Sutton will remember this, three consecutive months or five out of twelve failures. We've been there before with Medicaid. So this will be applied to every program in social services per these performance measures that were in the agreement. Attachment X defines the corrective action process. It's a progressive process. It starts with the DSS Director. We have an opportunity to do correction, then it goes to the Board of Social Services, and then it goes to the county manager, and it ultimately comes to you for participation in how we correct our performance. There are twenty-seven performance measures in this MOU. I'll tell you right now, not all of these performance measures are things that social services has control of, and we've had some pushback with our state partners around this, but I want to give you a couple of examples. So one of the performance measures is that the county will achieve an annual percentage of current child support paid. Well, as Claude knows, we have a large unit of child support we collect every year. We're at about eleven million dollars, twelve million dollars a year that we collect, but all that is dependent upon judges ordering, appropriate orders. It's dependent upon absent parents being employed, not in jail. It's dependent upon continuances, all those things. But yet, the county will be held responsible and will must meet this annual rate, even though we don't have full control. Another performance measure that a qualifier was added was that children who are placed in foster care only have for an average of four point, that there's only four point one percent moves per a thousand days in foster care. We're at, Almess County's at about four point four right now. So it says the county will provide leadership for insuring. We don't know how that will be measured, but things that are beyond our control, Bob knows, he sits on our Cardinal Board, when kids are in placement that are authorized through Medicaid and through Cardinal Innovations, then when medical necessity's not there, they're stepped down to a lower level of service. There is a move that we have no control over. There are kinship placements that we attempt from the beginning of placement to place kids with their relatives, and when those don't follow up and provide services, we have to move children. So that's something we don't have any control over. There are several of these. You know, we don't want to, this says children are discharged to a permanent arrangement in twelve months, so our teenagers who don't have families to go back to have better outcomes when they stay with us, our sixteen and seventeen-year-olds when they stay with us, we get them enrolled in college and some of those things. So it's not necessarily in their best interest to have permanency in twelve months. So these are some examples of concerns about this agreement. So I'd like to stand right here tonight and tell you where we are on every one of these twenty-seven measures, but I can't do that because the state can't measure all of these things yet, and we're still waiting on that. In the first six months, we'll give us that information, we hope. So what, what we need tonight is your approval to enter into this agreement. It is a contract. Been through it with Claude as well, so that he would, could advise you. And then if you approve entering it, who you would like to sign. There are two spots, Commissioners, county managers, but it is an agreement between Department of Health and Human Services and the county, not the county's social services department. So I'll be glad to take any questions, and then be glad to answer any other comments.
As a required, we belong to them.
It is, by the, the new law requires that we sign this contract. It is concerning, because I think there's a lot of questions about what these performance measurements will be. Susan and Curtis have to do an excellent job meeting their targets, but some of this is going to be beyond their control, and what I foresee is the state may be able to come in and tell us we need to possibly hire folks or make some significant financial changes to the DSS.
That's without money, though, right?
Yep, yes.
Well, that's right, and, and so, you know, failure can mean anything from corrective action plan to takeover and send you a bill.
Yeah. If this were, if it were completely relying on Susan and her folks' performance and their ability to address their goals, no problem. But I think it's so ambiguous right now, but we just, we do not have a choice. We have to sign this agreement by July one.
It would be a violation of state law.
Yes.
And we would still be held to it if we don't sign it. So there are many counties that are considering signing it with, you know, a statement saying just some of what the county manager just said, some of these are beyond our control, we'll do our best, and adding that statement.
I think we need to, yeah.
I think we need to say that. I think we need to make that motion. I'll make that motion that we included in our response.
Yeah.
We can, we can do that. I can work with Claude and with Susan and...
Yes.
Claude can draft something, I'm pretty sure.
Oh. So one thing that struck me, that, when you look at the attachments and, it is a nice review of the important work that the department does, but it also reflects on the, the social issues that we have in our community, that we need to be placing so many kids in foster care, and that there's so many people that are required to pay child support and that don't, and, I mean, it...
Yes.
It's not, it's not a very good reflection on our community as a whole.
We've, we've had a reduction in foster care, but we've seen a significant uptick. There was an article published last week that gave the numbers for every county in North Carolina that were related to, the overall number was fifty percent increase in foster care as a result of opioids, and, and we're at forty-one percent in our county increase in the last eighteen months as a result.
Is this legislation part of the effort, I can't remember the Senator's name?
Senator Tamara Behringer.
Yeah, so about making sure that we, that child welfare is, services are administered more from a quality, yeah, consistent from a quality standpoint across the state because there are such wide variations from county to county, and this was legislation to help address that?
Yes, yes, except that it's broader than child welfare. It's across the entire agency. That's correct.
So Mr. Lashley has initiated a motion to approve the contract with some qualifying language.
And we have to pick somebody to sign it.
And we need, so we need to do two votes or just one?
Just one, if you, if you go...
Who do y'all want to have sign it? You want the county manager to sign it?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I think that's fine.
Okay. So that would be the motion?
It's got to be two signatures.
It does not have to be.
It does not have to be.
There's two signatory spaces, but it does not have to be.
They're going to put you in jail, Dan.
Orange is the new flag.
Right.
We'll bail you out.
So, um...
So we have a motion and a second.
Second.
And is there any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So I want to just take thirty seconds and tell you about House Bill five twenty-nine that passed on Friday night and is ratified. This is a, a bill pertaining to the practice of funeral homes, funeral services, but what is added at the end of that bill is that, so as you know, social services has always been responsible for unclaimed bodies. That's in the legislation, but this broadens that scope to unclaimed bodies and abandoned bodies. Abandoned meaning if, if someone passes away and their family member calls and says, I want to make arrangements with you, and they go to the hospital and pick up the body, and then they don't follow through on a commitment to hire or pay the funeral services, the funeral services, then that can, after five days of attempted communication with that party, that can become an abandoned body, and is now added to the county of residence responsibility, and it says that the director can, shall have a claim of reasonable funeral expenses which shall be paid in accordance with this. If the cost cannot be satisfied from the descendant's estate, they shall be borne by the descendants of county of residence.
How stupid is that?
A new requirement, saying...
So how often does this happen?
So we don't know.
And is this, are these cases like before embalment, so there's like a patient issue?
So we, it could be, well, that, all that spelled out, so, but it very well could be prior to, it just depends on what commitment was made. If, the cost goes up if they're embalmed or transported, that would be a reasonable payment.
We don't have a choice in...
No, this is done. I'm just letting you know, because we didn't budget for it. We, we are currently expending our indigent burial line. Susan can, knows that, and so this broadens the definition. So we don't know yet, but as an Association of County Directors, we have agreed to start tracking this number so that we can report to the legislature. This did not have a fiscal note attached, and it is an unfunded mandate, so we'll be tracking this and, you know, providing some feedback in the long session if it does become an expenditure.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
What's going to happen to the abandoned body?
So then we'll be responsible for disposing of it and have to pay for that as well.
Using a funeral.
Can it go to Chapel Hill? Can it go to be used for research purposes?
So cadaver have to be embalmed within a certain amount of time. This legislation to be unclaimed means you have to wait ten days, so they don't want them at ten days. This bill, so our current unclaim says ten days. This bill says that if the funeral home goes and picks up or some way claims responsibility, then they have to wait five days. They have to make efforts for five days before they can turn the body over to the county. So that five days will be outside the necessary embalming time that would be required for them to be a cadaver.
So where's the body in the meantime? In the hospital morgue?
It can be. Mm-hmm. Or, or, so currently, our unclaimed bodies are usually at the hospital morgue. This, in, in these abandoned bodies, they'll most likely be in the funeral, in the funeral home, because they've already...
Then what happens to it?
Then we have to pay to cremate or in some other way. There's a new, there's a new process.
Maybe they need to dismiss in Raleigh.
Hydrolysis is a new process for disposing of a body. So either through cremation, hydrolysis, or burial will be what we'll be responsible for.
Well, maybe we'll chat about that later. I have more questions. People don't want to hear right now. Okay, it is eight twenty-five. Just wanted, before we proceed, do y'all, does anybody want a restroom or a recess? Is anybody ready to proceed?
Let's keep rolling.
Let's go.
Thank you, Chair Gailey, and Commissioners. If you'll recall, at our last meeting on June fourth at Cummins High School, the Commissioners indicated to me that I believe it'd be beneficial to receive information about how possible tax increases, property tax increases would affect the manager's recommended budget, and we talked about the possibility of a one and a half cent and a three cent property tax increase, what that might mean, how much money that might generate, and how it might be spent. So what I'm going to go over with you this evening is some information about those very points. So I'm going to start off just by talking a little bit about where we are right now. I presented my recommended budget to the Commissioners. Total was a little over a hundred and fifty million dollars, as you can remember. For county government, county departments saw about a point, point three percent increase overall education spending in the recommended budget went up one point five six percent, and our outside agencies went up four point three one percent, and the recommended property tax rate in the budget I presented to you remains at fifty-eight cents. That's where we are today. A little bit of additional information, particularly about Almess Borough and School System. So in this fiscal year seventeen eighteen, the school system was funded at forty-one point six million dollars total. That's their operating expense and their, their capital outlay. The recommended budget has the school system receiving forty-two point three million dollars. That is forty-one point three million in current expense and a recommended capital outlay of a million dollars. The total increase to the school system in the recommended budget, as you'll recall, was six hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars, and I arrived at that dollar figure using a percentage of the new growth. We did see growth in revenue between property tax and sales tax. The school system is approximately twenty-eight percent of the county's overall budget, so that's six fifty-five, nine eighty-seven represents twenty-eight percent of the new revenue. That's where ABSS is at this time. And then a little bit more detail about the capital plan for the school system. In fiscal year eighteen nineteen, the Almess Borough and School System will have six point eight million dollars to spend on their capital needs. Next year, we'll be spending about five million dollars in paying for debt for the school system for past projects. They will, according to the recommended budget, they'll receive their million dollars for capital outlay, and another five point eight million to spend on various projects that are covered in the next slide. So the school system for capital, from a capital perspective, will have six...
May I interrupt? Could you go back to the prior slide, please?
Sure.
Because I want to understand, because sometimes we hear about the school system having different pots of different money, so for a capital, they don't, don't, excuse me, they don't only get money from the county, from direct budget from the county, they also get sales tax money, they get lottery fund money, and then they get lottery and sales tax money, and then there's the settlement for the roof warranties this year. So there's quite a, there's several different pathways for the school system to get money for maintenance and upkeep of the schools other than just through the county budget, right?
Yes, that is correct. The vast majority of the six point eight million dollars that will be spent next year on school system repairs will be lottery funds or restricted sales tax dollars, or as you see, legal settlements that the schools have received for their roof warranties. And as you recall, we've worked very closely with the school system staff on our capital plan, and this is all reflected in our capital plan. This is the capital plan for fiscal year eighteen nineteen straight from our Davenport plan that we've worked with them on.
So you just mentioned a figure of six point eight million?
Yes.
I don't see six point eight million up there.
So if you take the one million dollars for capital outlay, added to the five point eight million dollars that's in the capital plan, so that five point eight million isn't in our budget, it's, it's lottery funds or sales tax reserve, they'll have access to all of that, and indeed are planning to spend all of it next fiscal year, all six point eight, and the next slide will show that to you. So for next year, fiscal year eighteen nineteen, straight from our Davenport plan that we've Uh, so for next year, fiscal year eighteen nineteen, the schools, uh, are planning to spend four point eight million dollars on roof repair and security upgrades to high schools. Uh, they're also, they also have, uh, a million dollars worth of summer projects, uh, in the works. And then, uh, that very last column is what they plan to do with their one million dollars in capital outlay. Uh, it's a variety of projects. All totals out to be six point eight million. And again, the vast majority of this money is not county dollars. It is lottery funding. Uh, it, it, the sales tax dollars are county dollars, but we, we have to use them to, uh, spend on school capital. So this, this is all in the recommended budget and in our capital plan, just a, just a refresher of where we are currently.
So, Mr. Higood, um, we've heard a lot from the public about the conditions of the school facilities and people being very concerned about leaky roofs and so forth. So what I'm understanding from your presentation is that there are a lot of funds there to take care of those needs and that the school system has a plan for fixing the roofs.
Yes, they do. Now, again, uh, they have needs to go beyond this, but our capital plan shows that we will be, uh, making available to the schools approximately two million dollars a year, every year after this too. So they'll have their, they'll have six point eight million next year. A lot of roof work will be done. Uh, and then, uh, going forward, uh, they'll have at least two million dollars a year based on our plan. And that was very conservative growth and lottery fund, I mean, excuse me, lottery funds, which I think we just saw the state's gonna change how much money we get in lottery funding, so they'll actually have more than two million dollars a year. But, uh, I think we, uh, I think we've done a good job working with ABSS to capital plan. And, uh, while right now a lot of it is not county dollars, if bonds pass, a lot of it will be county dollars at that time. So we're kind of in a holding pattern, but we have, I think, uh, done a good job working with the schools to allocate out these non-county dollars pretty well.
Can the audience ask any questions?
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Coleman.
So from the operations standpoint, just to remind the Commissioners, this was a big topic of discussion at the meeting at Cummins, was the school system's, uh, continuation budget. So the school system presented a budget request to the county board of Commissioners, and, uh, one of the main pieces we talked about was their continuation budget. And the schools have indicated they need one point seven million dollars, uh, new money, to meet their continuation needs. Uh, the manager's recommended budget at this time gives the school system an additional six hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So you can see there's a gap of one point one million between what my recommended budget, uh, is, is saying the schools would receive and what they would need to meet this, uh, continuation budget only. This is not their entire, uh, new budget request. That was about four point one new, a million new dollars. This is just, just talking right now about their continuation budget. So we don't wanna forget the community college. Talk a little bit about the community college. They're also part of the, uh, education funding from Alaman's County. It's this fiscal year, they're funded at, uh, three point six million dollars. Capital outlay is four hundred and forty thousand. And in the recommended budget, uh, they're, uh, recommended to receive three point seven million and still get their four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, the, a community college in the recommended budget receives fifty-four thousand nine hundred and nine dollar additional money, new dollars, in their operating only. We kept them at four hundred and forty thousand dollars in their capital outlay. Again, this is following right in line with our Davenport capital plan. Now, the community college asked for about two point seven million dollars in capital needs, uh, just for next fiscal year. We've stayed with our capital plan, and I would say we've done a very good job working with the community college, uh, planning for their capital needs too. We just, uh, we're, we're remaining at our four hundred and forty thousand. So we're twenty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars from the operating request that, um, ACC has made. So we gave them an additional fifty-four thousand nine hundred in the recommended budget, but that's still twenty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars less than their request. And this gives you just a quick insight into the capital plan, uh, for the, uh, community college. Uh, we're spending about two point five million in debt in the recommended budget and four hundred and forty thousand dollars for capital outlay. And then, uh, fund balance, I mentioned this earlier. So at the end of fiscal year sixteen seventeen, we were audited. Our, our unassigned fund balance is twelve, twenty-six point three million dollars. This is, uh, according to the audit, eighteen point three percent of our expenditures. The, the board has set a policy, a goal of trying to reach twenty-five percent. That's our goal. Uh, you can see in this, in this chart, uh, how we have budgeted fund balance each year since fiscal year thirteen fourteen and whether fund balance has grown or fund balance has decreased. Um, the bad news is, you can see in seventeen eighteen, this fiscal year, we're on target right now. We are estimating that we think we will spend two million dollars in fund balance. We budgeted six point six million. By doing that, we said, "We're okay with spending six point six million." But I can tell you as manager, I'm not okay with ever spending fund balance. Uh, I, I would prefer not to, and especially as we're getting ready to go into a possible bond. We, uh, we want to maintain a strong fund balance, uh, because our goal would be, if the bonds pass, uh, we want to apply for a credit upgrade to go from double A two to double A one. It will save us money. Uh, we hope to be able to keep the payments lower if we can do that. Fund balance is an important part that these rating agencies look at. So especially, uh, uh, this year with the bond vote coming up, I'm very concerned about our fund balance. And you see, uh, we're getting ready to spend some of it.
I have a question about that. So, um, so does that mean that the net for the fund balance was four million six hundred and eleven thousand some? Does that mean that the fund balance increased by, uh, four and a half million dollars? Does that mean that we spent that six point six one two million and then another two million? Does that make any sense?
No. It goes down by two million.
Yeah, that's correct. It means that we've spent, we, correct if I'm wrong, so we budgeted six point six million to spend, but we're only gonna spend two million. But again, I, I don't wanna spend any of it, uh, if I can at all help.
And we said that it lowers our percentage. We're further away from that twenty-five percent goal.
That's correct. That's correct.
But we did overall increase, because your budget is six point six and then spent two?
The percentage, uh, of fund balance, we won't know until the seventeen audit, the sixteen, the seventeen eighteen audit is complete, because what they'll look at is our expenditures have grown. So fund balances, uh, it's kind of confusing. Even if it stayed exactly the same, even if we didn't spend the two million dollars, we're very likely to decrease because our expenditures grow and it's a percent of expenditures. So if it stays just the same and we spend more money, the percentage goes down, so.
So I think if you look at, um, a previous, fifteen sixteen and then sixteen seventeen, we, we budgeted that we, we're gonna spend fund balance in order to balance the budget.
Yes.
But as the year progressed, we brought in either more revenue or we didn't spend all the money we had budgeted in our expense budget. Therefore, not only did we not have to spend the fund balance that was budgeted, we actually added to the fund balance in that third column. That one year, one point seven million and the other year, seven point eight million.
And the, the, one major thing is.
This year it's gonna go down.
One, one thing that's contributing to that two million dollar deficit is, uh, uh, and we're correcting it in eighteen nineteen as we are budgeting the sales tax for the schools upfront. We haven't done that in the past. Uh, and we, at the end of the year, we've made a transfer, and that has taken money out of fund balance to do that. So that has made it difficult this year to budget, because that was a one point eight million dollars right off the top. That is school system dollars that we can't spend on anything but school system capital. This year, we budgeted upfront, so we put those dollars in the budget upfront going into the school system, uh, pile, but it did mean we couldn't spend it on other things, but I think it will help us tremendously in eighteen nineteen. The one issue I wanted everyone to remember is, uh, if the bonds pass and we go for a credit upgrade, they will be looking at fiscal year seventeen eighteen.
That's correct.
That's the year that the rating agencies will be focused on, so we, we, we want to try to limit that, uh, that fund balance spend. So all that to say, that's kind of just a where we're at with the manager's recommended budget. So at this time, I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about some of the questions that the board had. Uh, what would happen if we were to decide to increase property tax rate and what would we do with those funds? So, uh, just a reminder that in eighteen nineteen, we're projecting that one cent on property tax rate equals one point three million dollars. You see the figure there. So if the board does, uh, a penny tax increase, it will generate that one point three eight five, uh, dollar figure in new revenue. So we talked about at Cummins, uh, two rates were mentioned, possibility of a one and a half cent property tax increase or a three cent tax increase. You can see that one and a half cent creates a little over two million dollars in new revenue, and a three cent tax increase, uh, creates four point one million dollars in new revenue. And I do have hard copies. I apologize. I didn't pass those out. If you, if you wanna, I've got time real quick. I'll pass these out. It'll take a bit of a moment. I apologize. Get all the way through the presentation and then hand out the stuff. So you see what the property tax increase, the dollar amounts that it would generate. Then, uh, the board asked about how, how would we allocate those funds? Well, there, there are many, many options to how the board might choose to allocate those monies. Uh, I've worked up two possible options just to give you an idea of how that could be done. Uh, I call the first one the thirds option. The second option I'm gonna present to you tonight is the percentages option. In the thirds option, uh, what, what could occur is the county would receive one-third of any new revenue created by property tax increase. The school system would get two-thirds of the new revenue, and the community college would receive enough funding to balance their, uh, their budget request. So they would get their twenty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. That makes them whole on their request. Uh, obviously, in this option, the, the lion's share of the revenue goes to the school system. Second option is the percentages option. So when I put together the manager's recommended budget, I was really looking at what new revenue growth would occur naturally and how would we divvy that up? What, what, what method would be used to try to divvy up new growth revenue? I came up with a model of, uh, say in seventy-eight, seventy, twenty-eight, two percent. That's seventy percent of the new revenue is for the county, because that's the county's percentage of its budget. Twenty-eight percent for the school system and two percent for ACC. Again, this is how the manager's recommended budget new revenue has been presented, so I just stuck with that as a, as a option for the board to consider. And again, in this option, the percentages option, the lion's share of the new revenue goes to county government. So a little bit of information about the thirds option. Uh, in this option, as I said, that, right off the top, what I would suggest the board could consider, if you went this route, was, uh, you would give the community college the dollar amounts they would need to satisfy their, uh, operating request, the twenty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The remaining one-third would, of the new revenue would go to Alaman's County, the remaining two-thirds to ABSS. And in this chart, you can see how that breaks down. So in a, in a, if you, if the board raised the property tax one and a half cent, the county would receive six hundred and eighty-five thousand new dollars. The school system would receive one point three million new dollars. If the Commissioners went, uh, the route of raising the property tax three cents, the county would receive an additional one point three million new dollars and the school system an additional two point seven million new dollars. All of it adds up to the dollar amounts that each property tax increase creates.
So that's just with that. That doesn't include what you allocated in the recommended budget?
That's correct.
That would be on top of that.
Yes, that is correct. And, and this slide, you can see for the school system, what does that mean? Well, you remember we talked, the school system's, uh, requirement for their continuation budget was one point seven million dollars new dollars. So in the thirds option, both the one and a half and the three cent tax increases give the school system enough funds to meet their continuation budget, and the chart shows you that. In the one and a half cent tax increase model, the school system gets an extra one point three million. You have to add that to the six fifty-five. It's already in the manager's recommended budget. And in that case, the school's getting a total new revenue of two point zero million dollars. In the three cent version of this model, uh, the schools get a total of three point four million new dollars. Both of these would meet, more than meet, uh, the school system's continuation budget that they presented to us. And just to give you an idea of, uh, what the county would do with the funding, that the county would receive, we're still in the thirds option. This is still, uh, the, the first, the first option we're talking about. On, on the left-hand side of the screen, with a one and a half cent increase, these are the recommendations that I would make. Uh, we currently are funding the three, you know, uh, the three DSS positions that are for, um, child protective services. We are, we have those in the budget, but we have worked with Susan and her crew and said, "They're gonna be in there. We're not giving you any new money. You're just going to have to make it work." I believe that they can do that, but frankly, if we were gonna get new dollars, I would prefer that we actually budget for those positions. We do need those positions, um, and I would, uh, that's the way I would go, uh, recommend that they be funded. Also, um, if we receive either the one and a half or the three, these are pretty much the same. Bookmobile drivers would be returned, uh, in both options. Uh, the one and a half cent, we would, we would add three sheriff cars back to the budget. The sheriff has, um, received twelve cars for the past several years. And, uh, this year, we're planning to pay for nine of them out of the budget and three from performance management. Well, performance management funds are fund balance, so it would actually be better if we would budget for them and not use fund balance, especially this fiscal year, uh, uh, coming up. Well, I would also recommend we, uh, return an ambulance. And I would suggest in both models that we reduce our fund balance, uh, allocation. I, I feel like we've reached a point where we need to try to get back to that, uh, I believe it was, uh, sixteen seventeen fund balance dollar amount where we about broke even, where we were really close to breaking even. That would be ideal, so. Again, these are speculative. This is what I would suggest to you that the county should do with any new revenue that comes in. We, we did, we just received a little bit more money in the three cent model. Uh, we did start adding back some capital. We added back, uh, a truck to the Parks Department.
Okay, I have some questions about this slide, Mr. Higood.
Yes.
So, um, is this, is this like taking a look at the needs of Alaman's County and really taking a look at the call volumes for EMS and the Sheriff's Department, uh, taking a comprehensive look at county government and where the money really needs to go? Or is this kind of skimming off the, um, the budget retreat and the conversations that you had with, uh, with, uh, department heads?
Uh, this is based on budget retreat requests, so, uh, we had, this is not the result of any long-term planning. I, I will say that, uh, I was very pleased with the process we went through with our capital plan, where we've laid out for county government, for, uh, ACC and for the school system, a long-term plan. Uh, I do believe that we need to do the same thing in our operating budget. It's much more difficult, but it should be done. Uh, we have some priorities, uh, that are, uh, some priority needs that we need to address on a longer term. Um, Sheriff's Department, EMS, I would also say, thank you for tonight, uh, some of the, uh, issues DSS we're probably going to be receiving from the state. Um, I, this does not do that. This is simply going back to the budget retreat, saying here are items that we would put back in, um, if, if the board did a tax increase. But I do think, and I would, my plan is to do that this year, is to try to do some multi-year operating budget planning. Um, I think we'd be in a better place if we did that. I think, uh, what I would, ideally like to be able to come in here and tell you is what a tax incre, what tax increase would be needed and for how many years that tax increase would last. But that is not what this is. This is budget retreat material.
Okay, and then I have some questions, I'm glad Ms. Osborn's here, about, for example, the need for those three DSS positions. Um, I understand that these would be for child protective services. Is that right?
That's correct.
And so I understand that your referrals for the, um, the first six months of the fiscal year were up almost two hundred?
That's correct. Actually, it's more than that now. That was our first six months, but as we're entering the fiscal year, we're almost double that.
So two hundred was more than the caseload for.
For like one worker.
One worker for a whole year. Um, and you mentioned before that the opioid epidemic, the number of children entering foster care has increased about forty-one percent. Is that right? And then another thing that I thought was interesting about these, um, positions was that this is a high turnover position. Is that true?
That's correct. We're at about forty-eight percent turnover in child protective services. Had another resignation today.
Forty-eight percent in one year?
During two thousand seventeen.
During two thousand seventeen?
Nineteen of our forty investigative positions turned over.
Almost half your people quit?
Yes. It's a high-stress position. And when the caseloads are large, like they are right now, some of them as high as twenty-nine and the state recommended is ten.
And we're gonna find ourselves being looked at by the state, by the DHHS. They're gonna come in and.
The, the first two performance measures were related to child welfare. The first two were investigations. We, we have focused this area.
So these child protective service workers, these are the people who come in when, when there's an allegation of abuse. They're the ones who are the boots on the ground dealing with children who are most vulnerable. They're being.
That's correct. They're the first responders of child abuse and neglect investigations and many times are with law enforcement in the field on those first, um, first calls, emergency calls. Twenty-four seven is our response time.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to review that, because it's been a while since the budget retreat, and I think it's good to remember what some of these things are about. So tell me some things about the bookmobile driver.
So the, uh, the Commissioners, uh, in twenty sixteen, uh, library staff, NJ came to the Board of Commissioners, uh, presented to the board that they had opportunity to pursue a bookmobile and pursue grant funding and, uh, engage the friends at the library to do fundraisers. And she asked the Commissioners if the, um, library did so, would the Commissioners be willing to support, uh, the effort by providing staff and operating calls, which the board voted to do in twenty sixteen. So, uh, to me, if we were going to, uh, do one of these two tax increase options, that would put, uh, that would be a priority to put the bookmobile drivers back into the budget, since I believe they've had some very recent success in acquiring grant funds and fundraising, uh, dollars to get the bookmobile up. And I, NJ might be able to comment on where you are.
We are about thirty thousand dollars.
We are about $30,000 away from being able to purchase the bookmobile. And so we just received word that we were awarded the $100,000 Library Services and Technology Act grant. We've been given a grant by Impact Alamance. We had some money that had been designated for Western Alamance Grant that has been re-designated towards the bookmobile. So we are almost, we're there. The only thing lacking are the positions to drive that and the mobile cafe.
And there was a board, the Board of Commissioners in 2016, which I guess Mr. Burd was there, Mr. Boswell was there, the other three of us were not, they agreed to, or said, if y'all get the money for the bookmobile, we'll pay for the drive.
Yes, they did, because all the money to actually purchase the vehicle would not be from the county funds. It would be through fundraising, some of the fund balance from the library and this other ways.
And help me understand why the bookmobile is so important? How does it fit in with mission of libraries?
Well, libraries do hit a lot of the different areas, and we certainly touch on all the pillars in the county strategic plan. In meeting and talking with the school system, what we realized particularly is that more and more of the school system is relying on internet access and computers for students to be able to get their assignments, get textbooks, turn in assignments, do their research. And in more rural areas of the county, there's either not a Wi-Fi access available or computers available. And by having the bookmobile and the mobile cafe, we can go, in fact, we've already gotten approval for seven of the eight stops, four in the southern end and four in the northern end, to go to areas that are rural that don't have that internet access.
And is there also, so that's in the afternoon, what are y'all going to do with it during the morning?
In the mornings, it would go to senior centers and retirement centers. We, our outreach services has more than doubled as baby boomers are aging and people are less and less able to, they're less mobile, then the bookmobile would be able to bring truncated library services directly to places like the Burlington Housing Authority, the seniors' center, the retirement homes, all the different retirement and senior facilities.
So this is lifelong education?
It's lifelong education, it's job and career development, it's digital literacy. We're hoping to partner with health to use, add a health component to the bookmobile so that we can reach the rural areas that don't have access to easy healthcare. And in fact, one of our stops is going to be at the Scott Health Clinic in the northern end of the county.
So if I could just say, being the commissioner representative on the advisory board, this is, came out of the strategic planning process, if they did, and I really like the idea of, I like to think of the library as a major component of our educational system because it complements ABSS and ACC so well. But in addition to school-age kids, it really helps with adult literacy. I mean, we have a lot of adults in this community that are illiterate, and so this is an opportunity for them.
Thank you. I did not mean to hijack your presentation.
That's okay. Any questions at any time, please stop. So I'm going to talk just a moment about the percentages option. This is the second option that the board could consider, a method like this to spend any funds created from a property tax increase. So again, what I'm suggesting here is we would stay true to the way the manager's recommended budget divvied out any new property tax and sales tax growth using the percentages the county, the school system, and the community college are of the county's budget. This model does fully fund ACC's operating requests. When they get 2%, they actually receive, as you can see in the chart, either $41,000 plus or $83,000 plus, and they only needed $22,000 and so-much dollars to get all the money they needed in operating. I would suggest to the board, if the board went this route for ACC, that they would get their full request for operating, and then they would put the balance into the capital reserve for them to use in our capital plan, which we're, right now, with a model where things are separated out, so we could do that. So you can see here in this chart, if the commissioners did an additional one and a half cent property tax increase, the county would receive $1.4 million additional monies or $2.9 million additional monies for the county under the three cent model. The school system would receive under one and a half cent, $581,000, or $1.1 million under the three cent model. And just a little bit more data about what this kind of model means for ABSS. Again, the continuation budget the school system has put forth requires $1.7 billion new dollars to meet. And in this option, the percentages option, only the three cent tax increase version meets their need. You can see with the one and a half cent, they get $581,000 new dollars. That goes along with the manager's recommended $655,000. That is not enough. That puts them at $1.2 billion total new funding. So again, I will say to the commissioners that I know this year, I used seventy, twenty-eight, two to divvy out the new revenue. I think that was very helpful in some respects because it gives some level of predictability. That was a percentage that I used. You know, if we were going forward and wanted to use percentages, we could do that. It would make it easier in some respects for us to do revenue projections in this multi-year budget that I'm talking about, but it's something to think about. So from the county's perspective, what would county government do with these new dollars? And remember, the percentage option, the lion's share of the revenue goes to the county. Most of it stays the same. We do start adding, just more money for the county, $1.4 million or $2.9 million. We do start adding things like capital back, parks, equipment, the library books, which are in the manager's recommended budget, are cut $45,000. That would be returned. We put a little bit more money in contingency. And you'd also notice we up our fund balance reduction. Again, my goal is to try to get us to that 1617 year, that fund balance budget amount, not where we are now. I would also point out, in the three cent model for county government, gives county government additional $2.9 million. That's a significant amount of money. At this point, in that model, I would suggest, one thing you see in here that's new as a capital project manager, I would suggest that if the bonds are approved for the school system, that it would be in the county's best interest to have someone that works for county government, that liaisons closely with ABSS as they start planning for these bond projects, that can attend their meetings with their contractors and be able to come back and report to the board how projects are going, how the dollars are being spent. I think with, thinking of the size and scope of a $150 million project, I think it would be in our interest to have someone to do that.
You don't think that would be justified to fund that out of the proceeds of the bond?
It's possible to do that, yes.
Because I think that's how I've seen it done in the past.
It could be done that way, yes, indeed.
I think that's a great idea. I think a lot of people have talked to me about their concerns about the bond, have been concerned about, you know, how the money will be spent and the accountability for it and making sure that we don't overpay for things. And I think that that would be a really good thing to respond to the public's concerns about the use of the bond funds and that they can be confident that Alamance County is doing what it can to make sure that their money is being well-used.
And ABSS has been very open, very helpful through our capital planning process, preparing for the bond and the Davenport Plan, and so I think it would be in our interest too. Absolutely. And you see just some other additional things that are added. We also add back the real estate clerk, which is in the tax department, is a board position. Talking with our tax administrator, Jeremy Akins, we are starting to get to a point where we're falling behind on recording properties properly. I think we're reaching a point of, been close to 60 days, which is a very long time. So again, when we reach a three cent level, if the board went that route and put significant amount of money back into county government's budget, that would be a good synopsis of what I would suggest.
But again, that's not taking a look at, from your perspective as a manager, really combing through and determining, from your perspective, what the priorities should be that was coming from the budget retreat and the interaction with the department heads.
That's correct.
So is it likely that once you have time to take a look at it, these might change?
Yes, absolutely.
Might change a lot?
Yes, you know, I've had meetings with some department heads that have indicated to me that they are looking at some significant needs in the next couple of years, and I think we would like to spend some time working with them, try to better understand where their departments are going and what kind of new dollars they're going to need. That would be ideal. Again, as I said earlier, these needs are based on interactions with department heads' budget retreat requests. So it's still needs, but it's not the longer look.
Like I think for three sheriff's cars, I think if we were to take a look at the sheriff's department and their overall needs, and especially considering the corrections officer and the high turnover positions and things, I think that the sheriff's department would probably more, get a bigger share of new revenue than what would show up on this, right?
Yes. This doesn't really attack our high turnover positions, which are primarily emergency service, the sheriff's department, and EMS, and CCON, and DSS. Those positions that you just heard Susan talking about, we have some positions in county government that the turnover is atrocious. This doesn't begin to address those problems. Again, I think it'll take a longer term, a little bit more in-depth planning to do that.
Great.
So, you're not done yet.
Well, this last slide, last slide. Basically, this final slide is just a summary. It puts all of these options and potential property tax increases in one place. So you can see, the takeaway from this is there are a lot of options. If the board decided, if the board wanted to raise property taxes, there's a lot of options to how you could divvy that money out. These are just two, the two that I'm presenting to you tonight. There's only one of them that does not fund ABSS at their continuation budget request, and that is the percentages option out of one and a half cent property tax increase. That does fall short. So the rest of them, I know that funding ABSS's continuation budget was an issue we heard a lot about at Cummins. So for the most part, they do that, the one does not. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, but I hope this gives the board some insight into how much money a potential property tax increase would create, and then some possible methods of how to divvy those out.
Well, personally, if we were going to do one of the methodologies, I like the thirds option the best, whether it's one and a half or three. I just think that, in my view, that's where the priority ought to go, and it still helps some really needed areas for the county as well.
Let me ask you this. When the five cent tax increase was approved, what fiscal year did that go into play?
That was 1516.
Fiscal year 1516.
That was my first budget.
And how much each year did that bring in that you wouldn't have gotten had you not approved it?
I have to get Susan to?
Give me just a second.
I think it was, a penny was worth 1.2 at the time.
I'm not sure.
1.23.
So we're in the third year.
Yes. And Mr. Sutton brings up a good point that I do want to be sure I communicate to the board tonight. I do believe we have reached the end of what 58 cent will do, particularly for county government, I can speak well for county government. This is a tax increase that's been several years ago. If we're going to maintain our current service levels at county government, I think we've reached the end of 58 cents. I wouldn't have brought you a recommended budget that wouldn't make it on 58 cents if I didn't think we could make it. We can, but it is almost no expansion and will not carry us through another year. This is as much as we can squeeze out of it. And it has, the recommended budget has issues, obviously.
And the school system goes backwards, because we're not even keeping up with inflation, let alone making any progress on the strategies. You know, I was thinking about, I'm coming, in two weeks, I'm going to have my 40th anniversary of coming to Alamance County. So I joined July 3 of 1978, Memorial Hospital of Alamance County. And it made me think about what healthcare was like here in 1978, and I contrasted it to what it's like today. Now, I'm sure everybody up here probably remembers Memorial and County, right? And I mean, we had, it was a good system, and we had good doctors and good staff, but it doesn't hold a candle to what we have today. And that just didn't happen. That happened because we had governing bodies that had vision, particularly after merger, and they did planning and they executed on those plans, and they invested in the organization. They invested in facilities and in their staff, and it's the staff that carries out the work. They invested in equipment, and they invested in technology, and you see the results. And then I thought, when I came here, Elon College was a good college, but it wasn't nearly what Elon University is today. And it's the same thing. You had leaders who had vision and did strategic planning, and they executed on that plan, and they invested in facilities and in their people and in their equipment and in technology. And then, and look at, you know, this was a textile community, and then NAFTA happened, and textiles really declined, but there was one company, probably more than one, but I'm thinking about Glen Raven, that reinvented itself. And again, they invested, they had vision and a plan, and they invested in their facilities and in their people and in their equipment and technology, and now it's an international company, but a pretty large employer base here. And then you think about LabCorp and how it's grown, and they, you know, but, so I'm just, this is what we, kind of leadership that we need for our school system. I mean, we have really good things going on in the schools, and you know, last time I mentioned, I go to the schools and I see what's happening, and a lot of it's around special programming, which is part of our budget, and we all know about the facility needs, and we're going to hopefully take care of that with the bond passings, but we have other facilities needs in the meantime. But we need to be investing in our schools' people and facilities and equipment, and part of that budget for the school system had to do with technology, some of the increase over last time, and teacher supports. And I get tired of hearing about how teachers have to use so much of their own funds just to get the supplies necessary to teach our kids. So I've heard since the last budget hearing, I mean, I've had a few people come up to me in the grocery store and at a restaurant and say, "Don't you dare raise my taxes." And I'm sensitive to that opinion and that need, because there are people in our community that are in impoverished kind of situations, and we have elderly people, and Bill, you bring that up a lot, elderly people on fixed incomes, and at the budget hearing, we talked about, well, there is help for, you know, impoverished people who are property owners with the Homestead Act, and Jeremy explained that at the last, at the last budget hearing. And this is a giving community. I mean, there's lots of other help in the community too for people who are really impoverished. And we do have a high poverty rate. I mean, we're a higher poverty rate in Alamance County than in the state as a whole, so you know, I need to be sensitive about that. But the ticket to get out of poverty is education. And if we would just think about investing properly in our educational system, and I think about my own career, so you know, I'm in that retired category, I've been on Social Security for a few years now, and Medicare, and I'm not impoverished, but that's because I came from a really good school system and it enabled me to go to a really fine university, Christopher Sheese?
Yeah, he's laughing.
Shucks. And go to graduate school, and then come here, first job out of graduate school. Now, I had some other things going for me too. I mean, I have the advantage of being white and the advantage of being male, but I mean, I would like to, I envision our school system to be a system that every child, regardless of skin color and regardless of gender and ethnicity, comes through our system in a way that they all have the equal opportunity to succeed in life, get through the educational system, do something post-secondary education, get a certificate and a trade, or go to ACC and get an associate's degree, or go to a four-year school. And if everybody did that, as a result of this excellent school system we're trying to build, then a lot of those problems that Susan just presented to us tonight, a lot of those would go away. We wouldn't need to be spending money on extra caseworkers because everybody would be productive and going down the path of just being productive and being taxpayers instead of tax users. And so, I mean, it's just so important to build this strong foundation for the prosperity of our county. of our county. So, and another thing, and I think about my role as an elected official. And I was, you know, we go through new county commissioner orientation, and I remember one very important message is that it doesn't matter what you ran on, and it doesn't matter who voted for you, you are expected to represent the entire community. And I would suggest that the people who are just vehemently opposed to a tax increase, no matter how much is needed, to invest in our community, probably haven't visited the schools and seen for themselves the issues there. They haven't gone to school board meetings, they haven't participated on facility task force meetings and, you know, getting the strategic plan updates, and they're not really close to it. They form opinions about, well, they don't want to pay increased taxes more out of ideology, perhaps, than understanding what real needs are. And as an elected official, I feel like I'm elected to sort of be their eyes and ears and understand needs and exercise judgment in meeting those. And so, I mean, I just feel, I have a sense of duty to make sure that we're addressing our needs to the extent that's politically feasible and to the extent that is possible, and do it in a fiscally responsible way. So I would just, so I'll just put this out here. I'm in favor of the thirds option methodology and understanding the political realities where my colleagues here on the DIAS feel, because, I mean, I'm on record of supporting three cents, but I'm willing to do a set and a half or something else if it means that we can have something as opposed to nothing. I mean, I don't know if you're willing to entertain a motion, but I would make a motion that we do the thirds option with the one and a half cent increase and see if it gets seconded and see if we have a vote.
So the thirds option with a one and a half cent tax increase.
Along with the suggestion of how that additional revenue would be spent.
How you burn it down on the chart.
Yeah.
What page was that?
Let's see. So, the thirds option with one and a half cent property tax increase gives Alamance County Government an additional $685,671. School system receives $1,371,342. On top of, and I'll show you in a moment, the manager recommended. Community college would receive $21,228 for their operating. That means for the school system, thirds option, one and a half cent tax increase, the schools would receive a total of $2,027,329. That includes the increase that's already in the manager's recommended budget. And the county's spending would break down under the one and a half cent increase.
Well, I agree with what you said about having a sense of duty to be fiscally responsible and to do things in a well-thought-out way. I would disagree that this does that. Going out, a one and a half cent tax increase, and then divvying it out without having, for one thing, we have the bond coming up, people only have so much space to go in their budget for tax increases. There's an economic principle called opportunity cost. Opportunity cost means that when you have, when you want something, you have to give something else up to get it. So if I have a dollar and I go to the Coke machine, I can either get a Coke or a Mountain Dew. I can't get both of them. I can only get one thing with my one dollar, because money is finite, resources are finite, time is also finite. If I have an hour, I can go exercise, or I can take a nap. We can't do both in the same hour, because resources are finite. I think that we have to consider and think very, very hard and seriously about whether or not there's an opportunity cost in raising taxes this year and how that might play out with the support for the bond referendum. I hope that everybody will consider voting for the sales tax increase that'll be on the ballot, because that will really help us pay for the bonds if they pass. But if they don't, if the sales tax increase does not pass, then we could be looking at a 7.88 cent tax increase, and that's if interest rates stay the same. I think it's very important to proceed cautiously and think about, can you spend that penny and a half, or, you know, I appreciate you didn't go for the three cents, can we spend that now and not have it to spend on paying for the bonds? And I think that the, as I said earlier in this meeting, the taking care of the facilities, the maintenance, and the construction of new facilities, of new high school, I think is the most important thing facing this county right now, and this year in 2018. And we just have to think really carefully about that.
Well, I'd like to make one comment. Last year, I think we sat in the same position. We ended up the year, how many million, two point what in the hole?
We, we...
We're looking at about two million this year.
Yes, 17, 18, yes.
So had we done what we should have done last year, would we have been in the hole two million? Point made.
Well, I'll say to you that if you don't budget it, or if you don't have the expense, you know, you wouldn't have been in the hole. You and I talked in your office about, you said 58 cents wouldn't go any further. And I told you, in all honesty, I mean, I like you, Brian, you're glad we hired you, but that don't mean we're always going to agree on everything. But I told you that 58 cents, I thought would go further, might end after we're gone, or I'm gone, or whatever, but the bottom line is, I didn't think we were as lean as we could be, and I still mean it. When you sit back and you look at, and it's not so much, I mean, yeah, I care about any taxes anybody's got to pay, whether it be young, old, poor, low-income, whatever, but our goal in this country has got to be the most efficient government possible to run this country, military, everything. If all intents and purposes, the country's near, if it's not at it, it's near bankruptcy. If you take the total indebtedness of this nation, look at the income, only, you know, I'm hoping our president can turn the economy around. I think he's doing it, but the bottom line is, you keep, we all keep spending, or, I mean, nobody seems to ever have enough. Now, I told you that there were counties that have 200 less employees than us, 200, and they're reasonable counties that have schools, they have social services, they have health, everything that we've got to put out there as far as service, but they're kicking our panties, a couple of them. 180 employees less, 200, I mean, put the numbers to it. And give me the figure here, I think you got it right there. In three years' time, how much more money did that five cent tax increase bring in?
So in fiscal year 2016, five cents created an additional $6.1 million. At the time, one cent was worth $1.23 million.
That was one year.
That's, that's correct.
All right, now, what about the next two? I guess we could say about the same, right?
Yes.
So you're looking 18 to 19 million dollars, all right, in three years' time. And how much of that 18 million dollars went to county races or salaries, would you say?
It was either two or three cents of the five cents, I don't remember. It's, I believe at the time, it was put forward, some went to raises, some went to ABSs.
A little over half went to ABSs, a little under half went to the county, and most of the, what went to the county was to start implementing the wage and classification study.
That's correct.
And we didn't take a huge step with that. I mean, we, so we haven't done anything with that since. So our staff are way behind, should be way behind.
And how much went in fund balance, I mean?
15, 16.
Well, that was on an earlier slide.
16 percent, when I was, when I left, it was 16 percent, and now it's up to 20, what?
18.3.
18, so I'd gone a whole lot.
It was up to 22, I think.
Yes, and then we designated the funding from the peak sale. That took, that's where we took the big jump down.
Well, I know everybody's got their preferences, and I know we've all got our philosophies, what we believe in. But I want to point out something. I did this tonight when I came up here, and I'm sorry I look the way I do, I had a long class at Greensboro, I got to be there tomorrow morning, quarter to eight, and I did go home and change, I apologize for that, but you talk about state average. People talk about the state average, you know, funding, per pupil funding.
I didn't.
Well, I think I've heard you mention it. And other people talk about the state average. And per pupil funding, and I pointed out last time, of 11 systems at our size, and there's not four others left out of the 11, we're in the fourth category. We're, there's seven below us, and we're ranked fourth out of 11. Okay, then, I think somebody conceded it, well, we're looking good locally, but state average, we're below the state average. If you look at our 45th ranking out of 100, that means there's 55 below us per pupil funding, 55, and then if you look above us, 44. Now, if you go in and look at those 44, there are 31 systems out of the 44 that have a higher per pupil funding level than us, but their system is so small that that per pupil dollar total distorts any efficiency scenarios. If, like, there are 19 systems out of the 31 that have a higher per pupil, but they have a much lower ADM than us. They have, there's 19 of those where the systems are 5,000 students, 2,000 students, 1,500 students, and it distorts the, whatever, there's got to be a phrase statistically to define that. If all the variables are that far off from each other, you can't talk averages, in my opinion. You stick all those averages together of the 44 systems ranked above us, and you turn around and look at it and say that 31 of the 44 have a much lower ADM, 5,000 and 6,000 students and/or below us, you can't, you can't say any, with any credibility scientifically, that our, that the per pupil, that we're below the per pupil average, as if there's some credence to give to the debate that you, that we need to meet the average, because that, it's just not credible. And it's there as far as statistically. I know some people just hate to see all that or hear all that from me, but you can't compare an ADM of 2,000 students and what their per pupil is, $2,000 or $2,500 per pupil, you can't compare it to a system that's got 23,000 where the, where the per pupil's 1,500. Now, again, I'll stand on that. Maybe I'm just not making it clear, because I'm just not that good at explaining some things, but statistically, that you cannot compare state average when you've got systems that have higher per pupil dollar amounts, but they only have a system of 2,000 students. You can't do it.
Well, I personally wasn't advocating funding to averages.
That's state average, yeah.
So I'm advocating funding to target that funding for specific strategies that will produce the best outcomes for our kids.
What you think? I've got a number I'd like to put out. I've got a number three. I got one granddaughter going to ACC. I want her to get the best education there. I got two going to be in ABSs next year, and I'm going to vote to give them the best education I can possibly give them, because I have that power on this board. We all have that power to decide what we want to do, and I call for the vote, ma'am, chair.
Well, that's a little premature, Mr. Boss.
How's that?
Well, for one, Mr. Lashley has not spoken, and for two, I wanted to respond to what you said respectfully. I wanted to respond, you said that if we had raised taxes last year, then we wouldn't have this problem this year. And I would submit that that is not necessarily true, that we do not know that if we had raised taxes last year, that we would not be in some kind of similar situation this year with funding the school system, with their continuation requests, with increases in the state retirement and the health insurance and things like that.
So did we advance any last year, over the year?
I think we did advance over the prior year. I'm just saying that I think it's a false equivalency to say that if we had raised taxes last year, then we wouldn't be having a discussion this year about what we should be doing.
Well, I would dispute that with you, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, with all due respect, I love all y'all, but I'm going to tell you, Dr. Harrison stood right there and smiled, told us how happy he was with last year's budget. I mean, he did. Go back and listen to it. Sure, you're going to take in more money, but it's...
Well, we would have been able to put more in our fund balance.
Well, I'm not for the fund balance being as high, to be quite honest about it.
Okay.
You know, I think the fund balance is too high as it is. You don't raise taxes, in my opinion, for continually operational budget line item, in my opinion. In my opinion, you raise taxes to pay for something, something hard. I'm in favor of the bond referendum passing. I'm in favor of the new high school. I don't like the whole package, but I'm not going to vote against it. I've been criticized like heck for that, and, but, I, that's my, where I'm coming down. But the bottom line is, I know we got to pay for it.
And you're going to have to pay for maintenance of those schools in the future.
Yeah, well, wait till you see the operational cost of all this, too. So, you know, I don't think you raise taxes for some employees that you need here and there. You find a way to get them, get it done, and the money's there. I think we just have to do better planning, and again, I don't think we're as lean as we ought to be. I honestly believe it. And I don't think you raise taxes to continue line item operational expenses. It needs to be something hard. And I think the new high school or that bond package is going to be something hard. And I think if it passes, we got to make, we have to raise taxes. I mean, I'd be a fool to sit up here and not vote to raise taxes after I said, "Put it on the ballot," and I'm in favor of it, because I'm not going to be that hypocrite. But I can't vote to raise taxes this year. I mean, not for this budget, no, I can't.
I'd like to know where you think the waste is, because when I hear from county staff, I mean, they're, they're cut to the bones. They're cut so much as...
Well, I don't get, I don't get hung in effigy tonight, but, you know, you think they're going to tell you they're fat? I'm sorry, it's...
Well, I've worked with people for a long time, and I can tell.
I've worked in private business, and I've seen, you know, people cut to the bone and say they are, and then say, "No, you're not." And, you know, I'm not going to sit up here and argue about, you know, I'm ready to vote myself, but...
Well, Mr. Sutton, if I may respond to what you said, I think that this is why I would like for the county manager to have the opportunity to go more in-depth with this analysis of the budget, because it may be that we need to hire more people. The call volume at EMS is increasing, maybe we need more staff people. If we have high turnover in certain positions that are extremely stressful at child protective services, then maybe we need to address that in the future.
I don't disagree.
But I would like for the county manager to have the opportunity to do his job and come through his dominions and find where those needs are, instead of doing it, you know, sort of fly-by-night. Mr. Lashley?
What I was going to say is, Dean.
Yes.
Well, what you should be doing is you should be talking to the school board. They don't want, once we give them the money, we can't tell them I'd spend it. And they've been pissing money away for 22 years, since I've been up here, and they're not going to stop now. So I'm not going to vote for this, the increase, and I'm not going to vote for the bonds, because I think it's a waste of money. They can do it a whole lot better than building a new school. They're going to build on to three schools, three high schools, double the capacity, and a new school, too, that's ridiculous. But plus, they're closing, closing their school.
No, sir, I'm sorry. We're not, I'm doing this. Mr. Almond, if you get to speak, and everybody's going to speak, and it's going to be a mess. No, it's not, I'm sorry.
No, we're going to have to go home here a little bit.
But we do have to pass a budget. I mean, hopefully tonight, I don't know if we want to do it.
Right, you got a motion and a second, you got to vote on that.
Well, we have to be sure everybody's ready to vote, rushing that. So we do have a motion in the second, so if there's no further discussion, then all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
And then I have a motion to make. I have thought about this an awful lot, and my thinking, I come back around to the school system's continuation budget. So the school system says that to continue programs as they are, it's going to require another $1.78 million. And most of this is for state retirement increases, state health insurance, and continuation of current supplements to the teachers and... of current supplements to the teachers and administrative people. And I believe that this budget request was prepared before the general assembly passed this year's budget, which included a six and a half percent pay increase for teachers. The continuation request was based on an assumption that the general assembly would increase teacher pay by three percent. So, the continuation budget request is presented by the school system is actually very short. And they need a lot more than was anticipated when the request was drafted because the general assembly has been more generous than had been anticipated. So, when Raleigh raises the teacher pay, it means that the local supplement that we have already committed to will go up because we've made a commitment as a county to match increases from Raleigh with a local supplement. So, when Raleigh raises teacher pay, it means one of three things. Either Alaman's County has to cut its spending to divert money to the, from the county budget toward increasing this teacher supplement. So, we would have to take away money from Mr. Viferman's EMS department or Parson Rec or the libraries or somewhere else and divert it to ABSS. And I'm very confident that Mr. Haygood has done his due diligence to try to figure out that was possible and is found it not to be possible. Or second, the school system has to cut its own spending to divert its budget toward increasing the teacher and other supplements. Or third, we need more revenue. And that's the situation that's, um, we've been discussing tonight. We have county needs that aren't being funded right now with the sheriff and EMS and the Department of Social Services, not to mention Alaman's Community College. And I have to ask myself, and this is one thing that I've been really wrestling with, what is the school system gonna cut in order to honor its commitment to its employees to provide the local supplement, which is based on what comes out of Raleigh? So, if we don't find a way to provide more funding, the school system is gonna cut something. They're gonna cut services to keep up with their commitment to the teacher pay. And money's gonna be taken away from things that more directly benefit the students and be redirected toward the employee's supplements. So, I don't want the programs, the supplies. We heard a lot about teachers having to pay their own money for supplies, other things that tangibly benefit the children of Alaman's County to be cut so that the teachers get a raise. So, my motion is that I propose raising the property tax by one cent. The continuation of the current programs budget submitted by the school system is So, the difference between that and the manager's recommended budget is $1,125,248. And then if we subtract the ABSS different from the one cent on the property tax, so I would propose that we full, we fully fund the continuation budget request of ABSS and then we fund the full operating budget requested by Alaman's Community College, which would mean an additional $21,228 for them. I propose that we fund the library so that the library can hire the personnel for the bookmobile and, because they've already gotten most of their grant funding. And this board made a commitment to the people of Alaman's County, to the library people. If y'all get the money together, we'll put people, we'll hire a driver to get in a seat and drive it around. And I think it's very important that we honor that. If we don't, then it discourages people from showing that kind of innovation, that kind of initiative in the future. And that would, that was $59,680. So, that would leave $179,388, which I would, my motion is that we would direct that to the Department of Social Services to fund those critical child protective services positions. And in support of my motion, I would say that these are the hottest fires. We have fires to put out in Alaman's County. And these, I think, in my opinion, are the hottest fires. Making sure that the school system doesn't have to cut the supplies and the programs that are in the classrooms directly benefiting children. Making sure that the children who are suffering greatly at the hands of those who are supposed to be their caretakers, that the child protective services are adequately funded. Making sure that the people who show initiative and say, hey, we're gonna go get some grant funding, we want y'all to commit to putting a driver in the seat, that when that commitment is made two years ago, people can depend on, that commitment being honored today. And then that we not forget our friends at Alaman's Community College, which is an incredible driver of economic development and education in Alaman's County. So, that is my motion.
So, all that can be done for a penny?
That can all be done with a penny.
You second it?
Yeah, I second it.
I'll support.
First vote. Get over here.
You ready to vote?
Yep. I have nothing else to say.
I don't wanna cut anybody's chance to talk on.
Madam Chair, I'll make sure we're, we're clear from finances end. The motion is to raise the property tax one penny.
Yes.
The proceeds would be used to fully fund ABSS's continuation budget, to fully fund the community college's operation budget, to fund the bookmobile staffing level at $59,680 and to use the remaining $179,388 to actually, to fully fund the DSS child protective service workers.
$338, $179,338.
Three hundred and thirty.
Does that math work out?
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
No.
All right, thank you. So, we have still something on our agenda. We have some year-end budget amendments from the finance department.
Good evening, good evening, commissioners. I bring before you tonight a budget amendment that will increase the general fund budget by $602,000 as well as the emergency telephone service budget by $8,410.13. I can go line item if you'd need, but that was in your packet as well.
Anybody have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we do what suits us.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. County managers report.
The only item I have for your consideration is we have prepared press, public information about our elderly and disabled property tax relief program. We have a quick video for you to watch about it that is available on our county website. So, Bruce, can you pull it up real quick? It'll take you just a moment.
Every year, millions of elderly and disabled Americans face the burden of paying their bills on a fixed income. This includes the real estate property tax bill where taxes must be paid on the value of their home. North Carolina provides a way to help these senior citizens and disabled individuals reduce or eliminate their real estate property taxes. This is done through the elderly and disabled property tax relief program. This program is handled through your local county tax office and is designed to help senior citizens or individuals who are totally and permanently disabled. Those who meet certain qualifications can receive a deduction on the property value of their permanent residence of $25,000 or 50%, whichever gives the larger benefit. For example, let's say that a senior citizen or disabled individual owns a home that has been assessed for $100,000. Under this program, they would be able to apply the greater benefit, in this case, a 50% reduction in taxable value, effectively cutting the tax bill in half. In 2018, this would reduce the county tax bill based on 58 cents per $100 valuation from $580 to $290. If the same home was valued at $35,000, the larger benefit would be the $25,000 reduction option. This would reduce the effective tax value of the home for that citizen to $10,000, reducing the county tax bill from $203 to $58. To qualify for this program, you must be 65 years of age or permanently and totally disabled, be a North Carolina resident, be a permanent resident of the real property. This includes the home, any improvements and land up to one acre. Meet certain income requirements. For 2018, you need to make less than $29,600. However, this amount changes regularly, so you should contact the Alaman's County Tax Department for more details. They can also tell you about other programs that may be able to help, such as the disabled veterans relief program or the circuit breakers program. These programs may be available to help you with your tax bill if you do not qualify for the elderly and disabled program. If you believe you may qualify or have other questions about this program, please contact the Alaman's County Tax Department. To contact the tax department, you can either email them at tax hel at alamannc.com, call them at 336-570-4126, or visit the department in person at the county office building located at 124 West Elm Street in Grand. They will be happy to help you find the answers you have about your property taxes and the programs designed to help you.
I'd like to thank Scott Ward with IT Department and Jeremy Agins for putting that together. We've got it on our website and we'll be hopefully running it on the PAG channel for Burlington and people will see it and learn about the program. That's all I have.
I have one question for you, Mr. Haygood, about textbooks. Last meeting that we had, Mr. Sutton had some questions for Dr. Boss about textbook funding. Did you wanna talk about that tonight or shall we save that for?
Dr. Boss shared information with me that it was, this fiscal year was approximately $1 million in state funding. Those dollars come from the state for the school system to use for textbooks. So, I think we'll be sure to share that with the commissioners too, so.
Okay, so they don't use county funding for textbooks?
I believe so. Stay tuned.
All right, do we have any commissioner comment? Do we all comment it out?
I'm commenting out.
Okay, great. All right, then we're adjourned.
Thank you.